A quorum of 25 voters being present, this special town meeting is called to order. Good evening. As I have done since I became moderator, I have asked a veteran to lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight. Ken Erdell, a 19-year Ashland resident and local business owner, enlisted in the U.S. Air Force in 1970 and served until 1979 with a final rank of captain. Ken served first at Shepherd Air Force Base in Texas, then after completing his undergraduate degree at the University of Nebraska, was assigned to Hanscom Air Force Base in Bedford, where he helped procure advanced processing systems for the Air Force and other service branches. For the last two years of his tour at Hanscom, Ken served as executive officer of the computer acquisition office. And Ken has asked, and I think it's a great idea, that while he is leading the pledge, before, if all the veterans in attendance would stand for a moment? And if everyone would now join them in standing? Can Ken lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of all of Ashland, thank you for your service. Welcome and thank you for being here this evening. It looks like we have quite a crowd, and I think all of us up here are grateful for that. The first order of business is what I call the preliminaries. This is where I go through some of the basics and explain how we will operate tonight. Rule number one: don't do this. Except there's once you can, and you'll know it when it comes. Town meeting is not the public comment section of a board of selectmen or school committee meeting, nor is it a public forum or a public hearing. What town meeting is, is the legislature for the town of Ashland, and tonight we are sitting in legislative session. Together, we collectively approve the town budget, vote on capital purchases, approve bylaws, and more. My name is Adam Schuster, and I am the moderator. My job as moderator is to serve as the president officer of this legislature. I believe that part of my job is also to ensure that those here in attendance understand what is going on, so I'll do my best to explain anything out of the ordinary. If at any time you have a question about something, please ask, as there are likely others with the same question. Additionally, I feel that I have an obligation to provide a fair opportunity for voters to be heard and discuss the issues, yet also respect your time and avoid lengthy and repetitious debate. I will do my best to strike a fair balance. I will be guided in running town meeting by the third edition of Town Meeting Time, which is published by -- somebody's not listening already. It's published by the Mass Moderator Association and generally recognized as the authoritative guide to running town meetings in Massachusetts. Joining me at the front of the auditorium are members of the school committee, members of the Board of Selectmen, members of the Finance Committee, Town Council, Lisa Mead, Town Manager, Michael Herbert, Assistant Town Manager, Jen Ball, Finance Director, Brittany Yakaponi, Ashland School Superintendent, Jim Adams, and I can't see if Barbara's there or not. If she is, if she's not, so I didn't say that. With me onstage are Town Clerk Tara Ward and Assistant Town Clerk Cindy Livingstone. This meeting is being broadcast live and recorded for later rebroadcast on WACA TV. Welcome to those watching us at home. When you checked in this evening, you received a pink index card. It's important to hang on to these cards, as you will not be able to vote without them. Because votes will be counted based on the display of cards, non-voters and members of the press may sit anywhere in the auditorium. I will genuinely be able to determine the results of each vote by a simple show of cards. In the event I am unable to do so, we have tellers that will form an actual vote count. Tonight's tellers have already been sworn in. Please ensure that you have turned all cell phones and other electronic devices to mute. If you have to take or make a phone call during these proceedings, please leave the auditorium to do so. The warrant that was posted and from which we are working tonight constitutes a notice or warning to all voters of what we will discuss tonight. Town meeting can only take action within the scope of an article on the posted warrant. Town meeting acts on motions. If there isn't a motion before town meeting, no action, including discussion, can take place. In order to allow for discussion, I will entertain a motion and a second for that motion after each article has been introduced and explained, but before discussion commences. Once a motion has been made and seconded, it is subject to amendments from the floor. The procedures for amendment in an article are listed in the back of your handbook in the section titled Selected Town Meeting Procedures. If you have a question or comment during discussion of an article, make your way to one of the two microphones and wait to be recognized. After being recognized, please state your name and address and direct all your remarks to me. Please keep your comments brief and ensure that they are related directly to the article being discussed. If you are unable to get to one of the microphones, please raise your hand, and I will have a microphone brought to you when it's your turn to speak. To ensure that we're able to hear from the greatest number of people, each speaker will be limited to one 90-second turn at the microphone during discussion of each article. There will be a timer. Time permitting, speakers may return to the microphone for a second time once all others wishing to speak have done so, but that second turn will be limited to one minute. If you are responding to a question, please do so through the moderator. There should be no direct discussion between parties at town meeting. All debate is to be conducted in a respectful and courteous manner. No comments of a personal nature are to be made. Rude behavior, especially shouting, bullying, and personal attacks, will not, under any circumstances, be tolerated. Anyone unwilling or unable to comply with this rule will be removed. I'd also ask that everyone refrain from applause and similar outbursts, including duck calls, during discussions, again, except for that one time. We have 19 articles in the warrant, and I fully intend that we will complete our business before leaving this evening. The biggest complaint I get after every town meeting is how long it takes us to get through our business. As such, I'm going to work hard to keep things moving along tonight. Announcements: The annual holiday tree lighting will take place this Saturday, December 1st, at 5:00 p.m. in Montenegro Square, and the community mineral lighting is next Tuesday, December 4th, also in Montenegro Square. These are both great events for the whole family, and I'm sure the weather will be lovely. The moderators' motions are listed in your handbook on page four. They are the same standard motions we approve each town meeting, so I'll ask to address them as a group. Do I have a motion to approve moderators' motions 1, 2, 3, and 4 as printed in the handbook? Thank you. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, and opposed. Those motions pass. Thank you, on to our business for tonight. For those of you who are standing in the wing over there, unless you're standing there because you're duty-bound to do so, I can't count your vote if you're standing there. Article 1: Hear Report of Town Manager. See if the town will hear any report of the town manager, pass any vote, or take any action relative thereto. Mr. Herbert?
All right, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just as noted, it's great to see such a good turnout tonight. I see a lot of new faces, too. That's always a good thing. As has been done in, I think, probably the last four or five town meetings, I'm going to take an opportunity to just really go through some of the previous town meeting warrant articles that have been voted on and successfully passed, and then give you an idea of where they are in implementation. So often what happens is you hear this big buildup to the vote on town meeting, and then you don't hear anything about a project, and you kind of wonder what's going on. So we've started using this as an opportunity to provide an update. First, I'll just give you a brief update on Cadillac paint. Those of you that recall, we were able to secure funding through local funds, as well as through our state delegation, who I believe are in attendance tonight. I do see our Senate President here and our Representative Jack Lewis here as well, to not only take care of all of the buildings on-site and decommission them and demolish them and remove them off-site, but also remove any remaining contamination on the property. I'm pleased to say that that has been completed. We now have a pretty barren piece of dirt that we're hoping to turn into a park into the future. But again, this is one of those things that the community has talked about for many years, and we were finally able to make happen with your support. Next, I want to just give an update on the Sudbury Riverwalk Project. That was passed a couple of town meetings ago, spearheaded by the Open Space and Recreation Committee. A lot of work has been done with them and our Assistant Town Manager and other staff to really implement this .8-mile riverwalk across the Sudbury -- along the Sudbury River from downtown to the train station. We broke ground earlier this year on the trail portion of the project. We're also building an observation deck, which is a really nice place where you can get a view of the town. We hope to have bids for the bridges coming in later this month, and hopefully by the end of -- or this time next year, we will actually be completed and we'll be able to enjoy that nice recreational amenity. Next, I just want to give an update on the Valentine Estate. This was voted on at the May town meeting, and there was also a debt exclusion vote. Since that time, there's been -- there were funds allocated to secure the property, also weatherproof it. The Board of Selectmen had a meeting on October 18th to discuss the future of this property, and I expect that discussion to continue in the very, very near future. Next is the MWRA connection. This is something that you don't hear too much about. This was passed, I think, in 2016, right Doug? I'm looking at our DPW Director there. This is something that helps us deal with those water bans and water issues throughout town. It's a direct connection to the MWRA in Southborough. I'm pleased to report, since that time, we have received a positive recommendation from the Massachusetts Water Resources Commission. It's a very big bureaucratic hurdle. We've actually installed the pipe necessary along Oregon and Oak. And actually, today, we just met with the town of Southborough to talk about the construction of the water pump station in Southborough, which will complete the connection, and that should be done, hopefully, in a couple of months. Doug said no, so, okay. A little more than two months? Oh, come on, be aggressive. And finally, I just want to give an update on some of the service delivery and service enhancements we've had in the past. Here you see one of our recent firefighters, John Stone, who is the son of Peter Stone. Peter's here. Good to see you tonight. But as you know, we have talked forever about getting up to five firefighters per shift and more. For so long, we've been at four. We really probably should be at six. We have just recently been able to achieve the complement of five firefighters per shift. I can tell you, the men and women of the Ashland Fire Department will tell you that it makes a tremendous difference to increase staffing by 25%. We've seen safety, enhanced safety of both life and property. How many of you went to the library on Monday nights a couple of years ago? That's right, none of you did, because it wasn't open! So over the course of a few years, we've actually been able to open the library first on Monday, get us off state waivers, and then actually just recently with the last budget, we were able to open on Monday nights as well. So that is my report, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. There being no vote required, we'll move on to Article 2: Free Cash Allocation Sponsored by the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator, if you would order, can you explain whether or not you're voting on the article, Finance Committee's recommendation, or the motion as stated in the warrants?
Okay, some of are back there. Thank you for the question. Yes, in general, we will be voting on the motion. Not in general, we will be voting on the motion. The motion as is printed in your handbook, unless I indicate otherwise. I think there's one here where we have a minor change. So you were voting on the motion that is printed in the handbook.
Thank you.
You're welcome. To see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to be placed in the stabilization fund, OPEB trust fund, Special Education Special Purpose Stabilization Account, capital account, and/or FY18 budgetary line items as indicated in the chart in the warrant handbook, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town vote to transfer $275,000 to the stabilization fund, $434,170.80 to the OPEB trust fund, $110,718.80 to the Special Education Special Purpose Stabilization Account, $557,346.40 to the capital account, $150,000 to the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, and $195,000 for the purchase of Zero Oregon Road. Ms. Yakaponi?
Thank you. So Article number 2 is our free cash appropriation. Essentially, free cash is what is left over from our previous year's budget. In this case, the $1,722,236 was the amount remaining in our FY18 budget. The amount consists of revenue that came in, in excess of what was budgeted, and money departments turned back due to various reasons, such as vacancies in their departments. The town established financial policies several years ago, which sets forth how free cash will be appropriated or allocated. The financial policies can be found on the town's website, on the Account and Finance page on the left-hand side titled Finance Policies. So first, according to our policy, we appropriate the amount necessary to keep the stabilization fund at 10% of budgeted revenues. That amount this year is $275,000. This appropriation will bring our stabilization fund, or rainy day fund, to $5,946,480. Next, we appropriate 30% of the remainder of the previous year's free cash to the OPEB trust fund. OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, which is essentially retirees' health insurance. OPEB was required several years ago to be disclosed on the town's financial statements. Although there is no requirement to establish a trust fund, it shows credit agencies that the town is working towards this liability, and the funding of this liability will help the town maintain its AAA credit rating. The amount this year comes to $434,170.80. This appropriation will bring our trust fund balance to a little over $2.5 million, which is approximately 5% of our long-term liability. Next, we are appropriating $902,346 and change to capital or one-time expenses. The $902,346 will consist of $557,346, which were the capital items deferred from the May 2018 town meeting. $150,000 to fund the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, which will be discussed in great detail in Article Number 3, and $195 to purchase Zero Oregon Road, which will be discussed in, I believe, Article Number 13. Last, we're appropriating -- we'd like to appropriate $110,718 to the SPED or Special Education Out of District Stabilization Fund, which will bring the fund to $600,000, and $600,000 per hour policy is the cap that this fund can be at. And this fund was established a couple of years ago to help the school fund the major swings in out-of-district special education costs.
Thank you, Brittany. Please note that the suggested motion does not include allocations for either the Stormwater Enterprise Fund or the purchase of Zero Oregon Road. That's intentional. Those amounts will be addressed and included in the motion for Articles 3 and 13, respectively. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town vote to transfer from free cash a sum of $275,000 to the stabilization fund, a sum of $434,170.80 to the OPEB trust fund, a sum of $110,718.80 to the Special Education Special Purpose Stabilization Account, and a sum of $557,346.40 to the capital account. Do I have such a motion? See, no discussion. This requires a simple majority. We'll start with cards. All those in favor of the motion on Article 2, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article 3: Creation of the Stormwater Enterprise Fund and Appropriation of Funds Sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. See if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53F 1/2 of the Massachusetts General laws establishing stormwater management as an enterprise fund effective fiscal year 2019, and see if the town will vote to raise inappropriate or transfer from free cash a sum of money to be placed in the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. The Finance Committee recommends the town so vote and transfer $150,000 from free cash to the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. Mr. Saint Germain? And Mr. Small? Get these guys warming up. It's about time.
Yeah, hopefully. Anyways, thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. It's impossible to explain what this new NIPD's permit is in a matter of six or seven slides, but Rob, we're going to start off with a little commercial from -- Mike?
If stormwater pollution was rubber duckies, it wouldn't matter what went down our storm drains. But it does, because stormwater pollution is not rubber duckies. It's trash, oil, cigarette butts, and pet waste flowing untreated to the sea. That's not good for any of us, because we all live downstream. Clean water, it means quality of life. Think blue, Massachusetts.
Okay, here's your chance tonight, your one chance. All right. And if I could interrupt for one -- not interrupt the squeaking, interrupt you gentlemen for a minute. We have a great turnout tonight, and every town meeting, there's this question of how many warrants do we print, because we don't want to waste paper and ink, and we're too low tonight. So we've run out of warrants. I would ask that people come in and don't have them. I see some extras up there. Share with your neighbors, make a friend. So I apologize for anyone who doesn't have one on their own. Sorry, gentlemen, go ahead.
All right, Mike, I think you're on Slide 3 already, but... Okay, so I'm going to start off with Slide 3. We're just going to go from here. July 1st, 2018, the town of Ashland were required to get a stormwater discharge permit from the EPA. This is a mandated federal program. The purpose of this permit is to protect our lakes and streams and ponds, like Mill Pond, Sudbury River, the Ashland Reservoir, Indian Brook, Cold Spring Brook, the neighborhoods, you know, near the landfills, things like that. So it affects us all locally, you know, and the -- one of the big missions here is to protect these places so kids can swim and we can go fishing, and we're not going to kill all the fish. Anyways, this mandated program is a five-year program to start. It's going to last many, many years, most likely. But it's a five-year mandated program. The cost is approximately $300,000 a year. Somehow, we need to pay for this program. So what this article does is it proposes to set up an enterprise fund to do so. Now, sticking with this slide here, too, Mike. All right, so many people don't realize that we have three different pipes in the ground in our roads. One is the water for drinking water, the second is wastewater, and the third is our drainage system. So this -- what the slide shows here is, you see the red pipe and you see the blue pipe. The red pipe is for wastewater, the blue pipe is for drainage. We do not want the red pipe mixing in with the blue pipe. Okay, next slide, please, Mike. Okay, in 1972, the United States Congress passed the Clean Water Act. And as part of that, the National Pollution Detection and Elimination System, known as NIPD for short, and that essentially set up the initial rules that we have to follow here in Ashland. So for this, we have a set of rules called MS4, the pollution, the separation sewer elimination system, and this is a list of stormwater rules that we have to follow. So an example of this is to eliminate cross connections here, and along with this, the DPW has to do some testing of all of the various pot of the solution in town to make sure that we have not have solutioned, I mean, rather, pollution coming through into the stormwater from solution. So the town water has many miles of solution, drainage pollution. We have 2,500 basins, miles of solutions. We have 2,500 basins. We have 500 drainage pollutions, and we have 700 outfalls, outfalls of stormwater that goes into the various solutions. So the DPW must inspect all of these structures and test all of the water going into the various streams. And they must test this for in rain, and they also must have tested it in dry. So there's a lot of work that needs to be done to meet the requirements of the stormwater requirements. So this is a very complicated program that it needs technology, technology investments. We need environments, we need lab tests, we need testament, test environments, GS, multiple GIS systems to complete this. So it's a whole yeet, a whole bunch of things that the DPW needs to do. Thank you, Rob. So basically, I have to look at things as far as operations goes. So what Rob was saying there is we have 2,500 catch basins out there, we have close to 1,000 outfalls, we have, I don't know, 80, 90 miles of roadway that consists of all these drainage pipes and all this stuff. So what this program does is we're going to have to test the stormwater that's exiting these outfalls. Now, this isn't going to happen overnight. It's not even going to happen in three months. It's going to take years. So in order for us to do this, we're going to need, we're going to need staff trained, we're going to need stormwater technicians, we're going to need boots on the ground in order to pull this off. And if we don't, we're going -- the town is going to be facing fines from the EPA. So on the next slide, so just on Slide Number 5, Mike, there you go. So basically, this mandate is unfunded. When I first heard about it, when Mike said, "Hey Doug, I want you to sell an enterprise fund to the town of Ashland," I'm like, "Oh my God." I'm like, "Yeah, okay, right, Mike, that's never going to happen." That's what I thought initially. And then, the more I got to learn this program and realize what a long-term commitment it was, the more I realized that this is the way to go. This is the way to ensure that this program is going to last a long time. We're going to be able to fund it. We're going to be able to sustain it. And that money that we're all paying is going to be protected. It's not going to end up in different places in the general fund. So now, today, I completely did a 180, and I understand how important this is, and I think it's important that the town of Ashland actually takes a step back here and embraces this program. We have the numbers. I think we got ahead of here. Down to Number 7? Can you skip that one, please? Okay. You've seen numbers before. We showed these at the town meeting in May. The numbers have been thoroughly scrubbed to come up with the best at necessary reduced cost to meet the requirements of the MS4. They represent a reasonable and acceptable compliance effort, and they are not extravagant in any way. The current permit is five years, but the MS4 will continue for many years beyond five years. So Doug and the DPW needs consistent and dependable funding in order to effectively plan, train his people, and the training that goes with this. So the Stormwater Advisory Committee was appointed by the Selectmen, and we were charged to look into what the finding would be, the best way to produce this funding to cover the stormwater compliance. So we, in multiple discussions, we talked with the town manager, we talked to the Finance Director, and we learned that this level of funding, which Doug mentioned, is a little over $300,000 on average a year, it does not fit up in the current budget. So our recommendation to the town is to create a Stormwater Enterprise Fund. Next. So one way to look at this, okay, is the fact that we have an opportunity to share this. We can look at this as a mandatory thing, it's funding that we have no choice. On the other hand, we can look at it as an opportunity, an opportunity to charge and share the fee to homeowners and to condo homeowners, and then to look out and have a fee to commercial buildings and nonprofit organizations that will share the burden of this in place. So when Rob and I started putting this speech together, this show together today, it was tough to figure out where to start. The show is so -- the actual, the program itself, it covers so many different bases. It's a very, very complicated technical program, and I just felt as far as setting up an enterprise fund, it was, you know, a lot of times, Ashland sits back and looks at what the other cities and towns are doing, you know, but this gives us an opportunity for us to be the leaders in protecting the environment. It gives us an opportunity for them to see, "Wow, what did Ashland do? Ashland is really committed to protecting our natu-
Ashland is really committed to protecting our natural resources. This just doesn't protect Mill Pond, or the Ashland Reservoir, or Indian Brook, or all these other rivers and streams. It also is gonna protect our drinking water in the long run." So, I ask, and you, I ask you for your support in this, in setting up this enterprise fund.
Okay, one more head here. Mike, okay, the, uh, board of selectmen ultimately, uh, will decide on the fee structure, the, uh, stormwater committee has, uh, suggested, um, a particular example of funding, uh, in the upper, uh, right-hand corner, we have SF homes, which are single-family homes, $10 per quarter, uh, same with, uh, condos, uh, it's $10 a quarter per year. We show some of the, uh, other examples in town, Federation Church, uh, $45 a quarter, Johnstone's Inn, $40, town halls, government building, schools, in the case of town hall, it'd be $98 per quarter, and up in the, upper left-hand corner, small business, a dental office, my dentist in plat, in fact, is $21 a quarter. And then in the lower-left-hand corner, uh, we have a two-unit apartment house, it'll be two, uh, $12 a quarter, and so, again, we, this is a way of to share, uh, across the board what we need to raise in ter, in terms of, of complying with the, uh, stormwater.
I just wanna tell you about, like, three weeks ago with all this rain we've been having, so, over in Hopkinton, you know that development called Legacy Farms? So we had all that big rain, we had some huge rain there for a couple nights, and it was on a Friday night, and their detention ponds decided to break loose, and what happened is, the water coming from Hopkinton, Jim, worked its way down the hill, over into Ashland, over to our water treatment plant, and then all the siltation worked its way into the Hopkinton Reservoir, which is, which is mainly in Ashland. So what this program does, it puts regulations, it puts bylaws in place, protecting the town of Ashland from things like that not to occur. So it's a really important thing, um, I believe in our high support, I grew up in Ashland, I know all about the Water Enterprise Fund, the Trash Enterprise Fund, but at the end of the day, I think it's, I think we're all gonna be very, very proud that we're contributing to, to actually keeping our lakes and streams clean. I think it's great for the next generation, it sends a message, this is the way everybody's going, so, I ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you for that very comprehensive report. To all the discussion, I entertain a motion that the town vote to accept the provisions of Chapter 44, F and a half of the Massachusetts General Laws, establishing stormwater management as an enterprise fund effective fiscal year 2019, and transfer $150,000 from free cash to the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. Do I have such a motion? Discussion. Dougie, you wanna step to the side, please?
Hi, Julie Nardone, thank you for acknowledging me. Um, Julie Nardone, 86 Elliot Street, um, if, can you put that slide back up, the show's the quarterly breakdown?
The show's what?
The quarterly breakdown.
Oh, court, the costing?
Yeah.
The, the map, please.
Yeah, thank you. Um, if this is so vital to the, uh, beauty and health and pollution of Ashland, why can't you put it in the budget? If it's a $68 million budget, it's a small chunk of change in the grand scheme of things. So, why are you choosing to offload this operating cost to the people of Ashland?
Mr. Herbert?
Thank you, that's an excellent question. Um, so while, right, now that's an excellent question. Um, so $250,000 might not seem like a lot in the context of a $68 million budget, but you actually have to isolate what part of the budget that would be coming out of, and that's the general government. It's not right to put in on the schools, we've got fixed costs that we can't really do anything with, so, we would actually be taking it out of the general government budget, which typically only increases about 300 to 400,000 dollars a year, so 250,000 would have to come out directly from that, and that's gonna have an impact in services. Um, the other thing is that the enterprise funds are the best way to account for any of these, what they call business-type activities, and, um, actually, from the Department of Revenue, uh, which is the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, they clearly claim as a best practice an enterprise fund, um, it's considered the best practice to promote and maintain a long-term financial sustainability for water, sewer, and stormwater activities.
Thank you, Ms. Herbert.
Okay, thanks. Um, those are quarterly, so you need to multiply it by four, and, uh, just from my own experience with the enterprise funds, they tend to not be very accountable, and, the other thing is, this says five years, but it will be forever, so just know that, thank you.
Mr. Rush?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Ken Rush, Bellknap Circle. Uh, the requirements that were to follow, are they required purely from the federal requirements, or did Mass DEP add their bells and whistle requirements too?
Mr. Small?
Uh, it's, we have Fred Sivian here from the EPA, uh, to handle all these technical questions. If you don't mind, I, I would love if he could get up and answer that question.
Please. And just reintroduce yourself so everyone knows exactly who you are, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Fred Sivian, I work for the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. My job is to work for all of you taxpayers of Massachusetts. This is a federal permit required by the federal EPA. Um, DEP tried to argue that some of the requirements of this, of the permit should come out of the permit to lessen costs to town. We were somewhat successful on that, but EPA ended up adopting this permit, um, uh, in order to meet the requirements of the Federal Clean Water Act.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Hoffman?
Uh, Curtis Hoffman, Hildale Road. Um, I'm certainly in favor of establishing such a fund, but we have heard four different numbers here tonight. We have heard in the motion, $150,000, we have seen in one of the slides that the first year appropriation is $200,000, our town manager has just used the word $250,000, and we had heard earlier from the, um, presenters that the expected annual cost is $300,000. Can someone square these numbers for us, please?
Sure, Mr. Herbert?
Thank you. Um, so Dr. Hoffman, when I, so, we expect FY19 to be $200,000 per this up there, so, we're not gonna be starting to implement that until about three-quarters of the year ends, so that's why $150,000 is requested, that's three-quarters of $200,000, so that's, um, 250, I believe, is the, roughly the average, if you average out these, these five years, I think it comes a little bit under, um, under that, um, so that's where the 250 number comes from, and the 300, um, I will have to say, I'm not necessarily sure unless you're talking about one of the peak years, like in, in three or four years from now. So, I would, Doug is shaking his head, and Rob is coming to the mic.
Yeah. Uh, back at the, uh, the May Town Meeting, uh, the town authorized 50,000, uh, in order to, uh, meet the requirement for this year, that's with the additional 150,000 that, that we're going to vote on tonight. Uh, 284, 234, 319, 296, that's the next four years. Uh, and the rough total of this is, is 1,400,000. Um, you could, you could say it's 300,000 a year on average, in round numbers.
I think, I think we're, I think we're good on the numbers. Sure.
That gentleman was...
We go back and forth, we alternate.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, Peter Potoff, 50 Wilbur Drive. Um, I have a question about what these funds are for and what the implication of them are with respect to, uh, as I understand that this is a federal mandate that we're trying to satisfy, but it's primarily aimed at measurement, um, we're seeing what the nature of the problems might potentially be. So is the entire four years, uh, measurement activity, and does that imply that, or five years, pardon me, um, does that imply that there's a follow-on program for mitigation that has an expense associated with it as well?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Small.
A lot of it, at least half of it, is, is for the labor force having, having staff out there actually doing, doing the actual testing, so, we will have to create a couple new positions, we'll also need, uh, seasonal help. We had an option, either do it in-house or hire a contractor. If we hired a contractor, it would've been a lot more expensive than doing it in-house.
Mr. Herbert?
Just, um, Mr. Potoff, I think it's a blend, really, for the first couple of years, a lot of that work that Doug is referring to is gonna be in the measurement and actually identifying what type of problem, what, the scope of the problem, right? And then I think this, you know, really, I think more the third, fourth, and fifth year is gonna be dedicated towards doing the implementation and then monitoring to make sure that the solutions that you've put together are actually working.
Hi, Matt Marshquist, 12 Wesson Road, um, I'm on the Sustainability Committee, and, um, the Stormwater Committee came and gave us a presentation, uh, and it became clear immediately that they put a lot of thought into this, um, and I really appreciate, I wanna thank them for the effort, because this is something that people don't tend to think about too much, you don't really notice stormwater unless there's a major issue, um, and I appreciate the, uh, you know, the requirement aspect of this, we voted in favor of this, and someone said, "Well, you're voting in favor of something we have to do anyway," um, but I think as a committee and as a community, we, we chose to be a green community, so we would probably be, um, supporting this initiative whether it was required or not. This is taking us to the next level in terms of monitoring and understanding the damage that some of these pollutants are doing every day, um, and I really, I think it's a good thing for our community to endorse and to do. Um, I think the, the fees around, um, the square footage, you know, it's not nice to see that bill come, but I think there's a measure of transparency there, which I appreciate, and I think it's, um, distributed fairly. Uh, as we start to look at the impacts, we need to look at where they're coming from, and it's sometimes just having it be a general fee that everyone is sharing in, doesn't make sense. In this case, I think it makes sense the way it's being done, so, thank you for that.
Thank you. And these will be the last two comments in this article.
Ashwin Ratanjani, 10 Upper Road, um, just a little bit of confusion on my part, um, we're right now allocating 150 from free cash, I'm guessing that's basically savings from our general budget, uh, that, that we didn't use. Once you put the fee structure in place, would we then be expecting to still supplement that with, with some free cash, or, if we did have free cash, would we expect some of that, that fees that you're putting out there to come, come downwards?
So, the Board of Selectmen have not decided exactly how the fee structure will be. I think, in one of the more recent FinCom meetings, what was, I think, thought to be the most fair way is to have a, like, a blended approach, where you have, it's partially coming out of, um, fees through the enterprise fund, but then also partially coming out of the budget, not necessarily through free cash, but also budgeting part of it as well.
Ms., could you hold on, Ms. Sulman? Uh, could you hold on for a second?
Sure.
Um, before the gentleman spoke, I mentioned that yous are gonna be the last two speakers, and then I saw three people get up in line. I'm going to let those people speak, that's the last time that's gonna happen tonight. If you wanna speak, get in line, don't lurk back, because if I say, "These are the last two speakers," that means, "These are the last two speakers." Thank you, Roberta.
Okay, uh, Roberta Sulman, 28 Woodridge Lane, I'm the Chair of the, um, Open Space and Recreation Committee, and we formally voted unanimously at our last meeting to support the establishment of the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. Um, managing our water resources and protecting our water resources and stormwater management are all pieces of the Open Space and Recreation Plan, and, um, I agree with everything that Doug said about the importance of, um, taking care of the environment, and it is mandated, so we need to do it, and we need to find a way to pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberta. Ms. Rooney?
Kathy Rooney, 136 Fontaine Street, thank you for letting us last three people speak. Um, I have been on the Water Policy Committee, we don't have a quorum right now, back in 2016, um, we were with, in seven, eight days of running out drinking water in our town, and we ran some figures at the time, and we have, um, enough hardscaping roofs, roads, sidewalks, things like that, with our combined properties and town roads, so that when an inch of rain falls on Ashland, we flush, uh, seven or eight days' worth of drinking water polluted down out into Massachusetts Bay. So I'm clear about the need, I'm clear that we need to do this, I'm a little concerned about, um, how you're gonna set up the fee structure based on square footage, and is there any way for property owners to get a rebate when they can get most, if not all of their water, being sequestered back into the ground? Because we need that water for our drinking water, we need it so we can comply with the other end of drinking water regulations, so they can't give us as much grief about withdrawing money out of Hopkinton Reservoir. Thank you.
Mr. Shearer?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a, you know, a quick thing, the Board of Selectmen did a, an exhaustive review of the expenses and the issues around this, and voted, um, unanimously to support this, but, uh, to get to your question about, just a reminder that one of the more complicated parts of this is setting the rate, which will be in effect for next July, so, really, at the next annual, at the Springtown Meeting is when we'll have, um, uh, be proposing those rates, and, uh, you know, the, um, there are a number of ways to do this, and, um, I'm looking forward to a kind of robust discussion about how to set these and how to give people, you know, the right kind of incentives, for example, so that's a great, uh, great point, but nothing's been decided, what Rob put up there was an example, a good example of one way that could be done in terms of how much, to give you an idea of how much would need to be raised on an annual basis.
Thank you, Mr. Shearer. Mr. Hannah?
Uh, Jim Hannah, 65 Elliot Street. I've been chasing the water around for a while, and my question on this is, uh, the funds are, are gonna be necessary, if indeed, that's the number. What I'm curious about is, I don't know what target we're shooting at, if I shoot, for example, take a strainer and run around town and put it in every brook for a day, and, and gather up the, the contents of the water, uh, parading through town, that would give us some bad stuff on the other side of that, that film, and I'd like to have someone say, "Well, well, check that out," and they'll check it out, and say, "There's 875,000 tons of toxic material traveling in the Ashland waterways." If that's maybe the answer, but it's at least a goal that we should shoot for first, to find out how terrible the reservoir really is.
Well, and, and if I'm not mistaken, as was stated, the federal regulations we have to comply with, it doesn't really matter what the goal was, the goal is to comply with the regulations.
Well, I don't know what they, they are yet.
And we're not gonna discuss what the regulations in detail are.
Well, that's gonna provide you, that's gonna cost you, that's gonna cause you to, to spend more money or less money, depending upon your, your toxic, uh, level, I should think. But I'm, I'm just talking about it right now, uh, whether you spend that money now or you spend it later, it's gonna be spent. Thank you.
And Mr. Ingram?
Gary Ingram, Olive Street. Um, as you know, Mr. Moderator, and, and the people at the DAS, uh, the last couple of years, I've tried to work towards more accountability, more, um, transparency on the enterprise funds. Um, at this point, I believe they're still, uh, rather up to us in, in where the money, at least some of the money goes. I wanna know, um, a couple of, uh, things. Um, you had a slide up there showing, uh, different possible quarterly, uh, assessments against different types of properties and stuff like that. Has anyone done a, um, a, a figuring of, if you were to take all the property in town that's going to be, uh, feed, and total it up, uh, on a quarterly basis, what a yearly amount of revenue from this structure would be?
Mr. Herbert? Or, is the answer, the answer's no?
The answer's no.
The answer's no.
So we have no idea of, of what the total amount that might flow into the, um, into the fund is. Um, have we done?
The answer's no, but I would argue, based upon what I've heard tonight, that the revenue target would be set based upon what the revenue needs are. So if we need $150,000, the fees would be set to raise $150,000.
Yeah. Right, but, so in other words, um, the dollar amounts on here could, uh, decrease or increase?
As Mr. Shearer indicated, that's an example of what the stormwater folks have put together, the selectmen have not undertaken, uh, an effort rate-setting yet, that's to be done after, assuming this is approved.
But until we find out all of the costs, um, and the revenues that it's going to generate, um, I can understand the establishment of the enterprise fund, but no funding for it until these are presented, so we know what we're getting into. Uh, another quick question I have, um, why wasn't this done during a, a special revenue, uh, as a, a special revenue account as opposed to an enterprise fund? One of the problems with an enterprise fund...
Let's get to answering your question, and then we'll thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Herbert?
Um, special revenue accounts actually... Special revenue accounts are actually more opaque than an Enterprise Fund.
It may be, but it has no clawback, so that fees for shared service...
Mr. Ingram, you asked a question.
Excuse me.
You've got the answer.
Then my next question would be...
Your last question.
Has anyone determined what the direct costs to the Enterprise Fund, such as personnel, vehicles, et cetera, et cetera, are going to be, as opposed to how much of the Enterprise Fund that's going to be available, is available for a clawback by the General Fund in order to pay for all of the infrastructure that has to go around people to support this?
Mr. Herbert?
The budget has been established based on what we think the needs of the Enterprise Fund are going to be.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ingram.
So we have no indirect costs, or how much we could use from this fund to...
Thank you.
...feedback into the General Fund. Thank you.
At this point, we'll proceed with the vote. This will require a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion for Article III, please raise your cards. Thank you very much. And opposed. And that passes, but not unanimously. Article IV, Property Tax Exemption Sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. To see if the town will vote to adjust the exemption amount and eligibility factors for the property tax exemption for senior citizens under Master General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41(c)(1/2), to be effective for exemptions granted for any fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends that property tax exemption percentage be set at six, sorry, at 10% as recommended by the Board of Assessors. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, town meeting, and thank you for the great turnout tonight. Article IV is an annual vote to set the property tax exemption amount for qualifying Ashland seniors. This was adopted by the town a number of years ago under Master General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41(c)(1/2). And under 41(c)(1/2), the town can exempt up to 20% of the average assessed residential property valuation. The Board of Assessors has recommended that the exemption percentage be set at 10%. This equates to approximately a $600 exemption for those qualifying seniors, and the Select Board asks that town meeting support Article IV. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town vote to adjust the exemption amount and eligibility factors for the property tax exemption for senior citizens under Master General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41(c)(1/2) to 10%, to be effective for exemptions granted the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018. Do I have such a motion? Discussion. Mr. Rush?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Is the 10% exemption the same as we voted last year?
Mr. Herbert?
I believe it was actually 10.5% last year, but because of the change of the tax rate and valuation, the actual exemption amount, not the percentage, is actually going to go up by $6 this year.
And what is the actual exemption amount, or expected?
I believe it's going to be a little bit more than what Mr. Mitchell had stated. It's going to be $666, but it's not the great, greatest number. I think we can all agree.
No.
But we won't have the exact figure until the recap sheet is done in late December and the tax rate is set.
Let's say, what was the aggregate exemptions granted for last year?
The total amount of the exemptions?
Yeah, let's say, what tax didn't we get?
Oh, $115,000.
All right, thank you.
$113,200, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Rush. Seeing no further discussion, we'll move to a vote, which requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion for Article IV, please raise your cards. Thank you very much. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article V, Approved Tax Agreement for Solar Projects Sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. See if the town will vote in accordance with General Law, Chapter 59, Section 38H, to authorize the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Assessors to negotiate and enter into and execute a tax agreement with Ashland Solar LLC for a period of up to 25 years, whereby Ashland Solar LLC will pay the town a sum of money per year relative to a photovoltaic solar facility to be located on a parcel of land located in map 13, Lot 138, also known as Zero MBTA Access Road Ashland, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Assessors to negotiate and enter into and execute a tax agreement with Ashland Solar LLC for a period of up to 25 years, whereby Ashland Solar LLC will pay the town a sum of $1.5 million over the agreed-upon period. Mr. Sheer?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So I think this is pretty straightforward. This is, for people who don't know, this is to build a solar, it will be built, Citizens Energy will be building a solar array over the Nyansah Cap area plus a parcel, and you'll see that actually when we get into the Rail Transit District warrant. I believe that's shown on that map. So this is, Citizens Energy is a nonprofit organization, but this is a way for us to, we negotiated a pilot agreement, or actually, the town manager did, to, for payment in lieu of taxes over this 25-year period for $1.5 million, and the Board of Selectmen would ask your support for this article.
Thank you, Mr. Sheer. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town votes to authorize the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Assessors to negotiate and enter into and execute a tax agreement with Ashland Solar LLC for a period of up to 25 years for a photovoltaic solar facility to be located on a parcel of land located in map 13, Lot 138, also known as Zero MBTA Access Road Ashland. Do I have such a motion? Discussion.
Ashwin Ratanjani, Ten Harper Road. Hopefully, a quick question. They said that it was in lieu of taxes. What was the proposed or projected tax revenue that we would be doing this in lieu of?
So the projected tax route, sorry.
No.
Projected tax revenue would actually be $1.5 million. It would be the same, it's just distributed differently.
Seeing no further discussion, we'll move to a vote. This will require a simple majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes, but not unanimously. Article VI, Approved Purchase-Taking of Land Ran- Rail Transit District Sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. See if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to purchase, acquire, or take by eminent domain, and to raise and appropriate, either by appropriation, borrowing, or otherwise, a sum of money to fund said purchase or taking, along with all associated legal and engineering costs necessary. The property or any part thereof located at Ashland, Massachusetts, identified as Lot 2A, containing approximately 38 acres of land, and Lot 3, containing approximately 123 acres off the MBT Access Road. The acquisition of said land having been determined to be necessary for the health and welfare of the inhabitants of Ashland, and to be used for recreational use, affordable housing, and economic development, to be under the care, custody, and control of the Board of Selectmen, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to purchase, acquire, or take by eminent domain, and to raise and appropriate, either by appropriation, borrowing, or otherwise, a sum of $4.8 million to fund said purchase or taking, along with all associated legal and engineering costs necessary. This property provides a unique opportunity for recreational, commercial, and housing development as directed by the town. Mr. Herbert?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is something I'm really excited about. I wasn't really sure that we would have an opportunity to do this a couple of years ago. And I'll just start off, for those of you that aren't familiar with the Rail Transit District, it's about 180 acres. That encompasses the Nyansah Cap, which we just referenced in the previous article, but then also 38 acres on the left side of what's known as the MBTA Access Road, which is the road that runs from 135 to the train station, and then over 100 acres on the right side of the MBTA Access Road, where you see the Dunkin' Donuts as well. That property was purchased back in, I think, 1980 by a gentleman named Bob Gaynor. He has owned it since that, that whole entire time. And around the year 2000, as we know, the site or part of the site has a very, has a very colorful history, both literally and figuratively, unfortunately. And it's, you know, there was a lot of work on it around the year 2000 to zone it, to make it more productive. But I think the important thing to point out is that this town was very, very different in the year 2000. We had different needs, we had different, the makeup of the town was completely different. The plan, as you can see up here, and this is just one concept plan that the, that the landowner has presented, really encourages what we know, what we know as sprawl. So instead of concentrating development on smaller parcels of land, instead, what you do is you build, basically, you cut down every single tree that you can find, and you build low-density type of homes. There was very little, little limited commercial activity on the site that was planned. It had some heavy environmental impacts. Whenever you talk about sprawl, it's not just about, you know, the deforestation and the denuding of certain, the certain parcel of land, but you have increased pervious, impervious surface, so you have increased runoff, things of that nature. And I think just more importantly, I've been here for five and a half years, and I think, I think, you know, what has been zoned and what the plan is for this property does not reflect the values that we have as a community. And I think it's important, now that we have an opportunity to, to change that and to shift that, that we seriously take a look at doing it. As you can see, the, just as a reference sake, and this is a pretty, pretty large site, so you have the MBTA station there, here's the Route 135, here's Lot 2, this is the MBTA Access Road, Lot 2, Lot 3, that's obviously the cap. Those of you who have been around for the last couple of years know that recently, a 400-unit apartment complex was built on the site that's called the Cirrus Development. That was Phase 1 of this plan. The developer's looking at moving towards Phase 2 and Phase 3. Just to kind of do a deep dive on each of the parcels, so Lot 2 is 38 acres. Currently, it's zoned for up to 252 townhomes. This concept plan that's shown up here is actually for 108. It's on practically the entire 38 acres. It is through zoning and also through a covenant with the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board. It's restricted to age 55-plus, but, and this is extremely important, only 10% of these units are considered affordable by the Department of Housing and Community Development, and I'll explain why that's important later. But ultimately, what it means is that there's no progress towards 40B requirements. And for those of you that don't know what 40B is, 40B states, if you don't have 10% of your housing deemed affordable by the Department of Housing and Community Development, developers have the opportunity to come into a town and override your local zoning and build very, very high-density complexes on parcels that really are more designed for low-density use. And then, as a consequence of all, consequence of all this, you really have no open space on this parcel, other than what's a buffer that's actually codified in zoning right about here. Again, for reference sakes, this is Lorraine Drive over here, and here's the rest of the Apple Ridge neighborhood. So Lot 3, again, this is another concept plan. Lot 3 in total is 121 acres. The commercial section was actually designed to be a strip mall. As we all know, that's, that is not, well, that strip malls aren't doing too well. I guess that's the best way to say it right now. The solar, there's a solar project on the cap in the budding parcel. The remainder of the space can be developed with townhomes at a density of 10 townhomes per acre, so it's an extremely dense project. And again, you have access on a number of different part, areas of the site, from the MBTA Road, Cherry Street, and Magunko Road. So again, I think we can, I'm making a large assumption that that plan and that zoning is not consistent with where we want to go as a community. I don't think it meets our current needs, our future needs. I don't think it meets our values and our standards as a community. And again, I think now is an opportunity, based on some of the things that are happening and an aligning of the stars, so to speak, where we actually have an opportunity to acquire and control a good portion of this, of this project, or this piece of property. So what does that mean exactly? Okay? It's really more of a three-pronged approach, I think. So the first, I think part of this new vision is a new regional YMCA facility. So how many of you in here have experience with the YMCA, the Metro West YMCA? A very good number of you. I have personal experience myself. My daughter frequently goes to the camp in Hopkinton. She's benefited from some of the after-school programs. The Y serves a unique, a very unique social and community mission in the communities that they serve. They are also really, really critical economic development drivers. Sometimes people do not think of YMCA's as an economic development tool, but you think about it, it attracts so many different people. And again, this is going to be a regional facility servicing Ashland, Hopkinton, and Holliston, and other towns. You're going to have all of these people coming into town who are going to use the Y, and then the plan is that they will go to other commercial locations within town and frequent those locations as well. It's a perfect location for a YMCA. It's across from the middle school. We all talk about the fact that middle schoolers have very little recreational opportunities for them after school, and we know how critical that is in their development and making sure that they stay on the straight and narrow path. Wish I had a YMCA when I was a kid. Probably would have helped. But also, I'll get to the next step, which is senior facilities, and then you're also going to be capturing traffic that's going to the train station as well. And again, I think just going back to the first bullet point, YMCA's are no longer gems with pools, although this will be a gem with a pool. It's going to have a lot of opportunities for community programming. I think the plan is to have like a community, almost like commercial kitchen facility in there. But they also, again, serve a unique social mission. They have programs for our seniors that focus on pre-diabetes, healthy living. They have ultimate, ultimately, just crazy recreational programs that kids can take advantage of and adults. So that's the YMCA, again, prong one. The second is, instead of doing townhomes on Lot 2, I would propose that we would do senior affordable housing apartments. Now, I said it was zoned for up to 252 townhomes. I would like to look at zoning in the future, probably in early February, that will change the zoning to allow for up to 180 units of 62-plus, or 180 units of apartments restricted to people 62 years and older with a local preference. So a key component of this is 25% of these apartments would be considered affordable by DHCD. And that's really, really important, because in Massachusetts, in its infinite wisdom, and I will say this predates our state delegations time, I want to point that out, for some reason, for sale units like townhomes, like if you had 25% of townhomes deemed affordable, you can only count those 25% towards your affordable housing inventory. But apartments, the game completely changes, because when you do 25% of your apartments as affordable, you get to count all 100% of those units towards your affordable housing inventory. So this actually will give us 40B protection for at least two years, and will raise our production significantly. And I think more importantly, it's going to be on a smaller footprint. So you can do 150 to 180 units on 12 acres, as opposed to doing 108 townhomes on 38 acres. And then just going back to the affordability, sorry to jump around, there is, for those of you that are familiar with affordable housing, it's typically deemed affordable at 80% of the area median income. That is still very, very, very hard for some of our seniors to meet. So I think a key component of this part of the project would be to get some units at the 30 and 50% income levels. And then finally, I think the third, the third prong to this whole new plan is using it for the Upper Charles Trail and recreational purposes. So those of you that are familiar with the Upper Charles Trail and their plan, this is a critical component of their route. It also has, we also plan on having scores of acres of open space on both Lot 2 and Lot 3. One of the unique things about Lot 3 is that it's got the eastern wetlands. Those of you that were here when Nyansah was being cleaned up know that that section was severely contaminated. EPA went through great expense to basically excavate 10 feet of soil throughout the whole section and replace it and restore those wetlands, and it's really a beautiful and unique, unique feature for town. So what does this all look like when you put it all together? So again, this kind of cuts off some of the northern part, but what we would look at doing is essentially having the apartments on this side, they could, or this section of Lot 2. It could potentially go here, but I think we would prefer up here. Over on this side would be the YMCA. This would be a section of land that's going, going to be used for the solar facility. This would be a section of land that's going, going to be used for the solar facility, and then, the rest of it we can use as either commercial or open space. I think if we did anything commercial, it'd probably be about 10 acres, probably be about right here. And again, the rest of it, I think we can utilize for open space. So, what is this, I've given you this plan, what is the actual vote, right? So, Article 6 is asking Town Meeting to approve the purchase of 95 plus or minus acres of Lot 3 for $4.8 million. That excludes the parcels that are used for the solar facility, and then also 12 and a half acres that's going to go to the YMCA for the regional facility. I should point out that when the landowner closes with the developer on Lot 2, for those apartments I referenced, he will actually pay the town $405,000. But then, the real unique feature of this plan, and again, it's complicated, is the purchase also triggers two very important events related to the plan. So, first is, it does trigger that donation of 12 and a half acres to the Metro West YMCA. Do want to point out that that is a gift agreement that has been consummated by both the Y and the landowner, and I actually have a copy of it, it's being held in escrow. And then, one thing is that on Lot 2, since you're going to be doing apartments and you have a smaller footprint, we're actually going to be able to get 20 to 24 acres of the 38 acres deeded back to us as open space. So, and that's also in the purchase and sale agreement as well. So, that is what we're asking Town Meeting to vote on. Question is, is how do you fund something like this? This is a, this is a serious purchase. So, the pilot agreement we just referenced, again, that's going to provide us with $1.5 million over a 20-year period. Senator Spilka, this is not going to be the first time you hear her name tonight, has also been able-
All in a good way, though.
All in a good way, yes. Has also been able to secure through the Economic Development Bond Bill $3 million specifically for the development of land of housing, community, and commercial use in the rail transit district. And then, this plan gives us an opportunity to make ourselves available a number of other funding sources, like land grants, which we've utilized before at $400,000 maximum, a housing choice grant at $250,000, a land and water conservation fund grant, which is actually one of the grants we use to fund the Riverwalk, and that's a maximum of $300,000. Anything remaining, we would handle within the tax levy and put it as part of our capital plan, so we would not be asking for a debt exclusion or an override to fund this. So, again, that's about as simple as I can make this complicated plan. I hope you agree that it's a much better vision for the future and a vision for this piece of property, and I hope that you support it.
Thank you, Mr. Herbert. To all discussion, I'll enter in a motion, and I apologize in advance, this is one of the ones the council makes me read the entire thing. That the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to purchase, acquire, or take by eminent domain and to appropriate $4.8 million to fund said purchase or taking, along with all associated legal and engineering costs necessary, the property or any part thereof located in Ashland, Massachusetts, the entirety of which is identified on a plan entitled Plan of and in Ashland, Mass., prepared for JPA Apartment Development, Inc., and recorded as Plan 966 on July 28, 2006, at the Middlesex Registry of Deeds, Southern District, and also known as Assessor Map 13, Lot 138, off the MBTA access road, collectively the property, copies of which are on file in the Town Clerk's Office. Acquisition of said land having been determined to be necessary for the health and welfare of the inhabitants of Ashland and to be used for recreational use, affordable housing, and economic development to be under the care, custody, and control of the Board of Selectmen. And to meet said appropriation, the Town Treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Master and Law Chapter 44 or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with the Master and Law Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Do I have such a motion?
Mark. Let's keep it down, folks, please. Mr. Tsone?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. Mark Tsone, 49 Hawthorne Road, Ashland, Mass., lifelong resident. Ah, yes, let's get back to the year 2000 and where this all started, to now where it could be going in the future. First of all, I know you're going to put my timer up, thank you. And I'd like to, I'd like to say to State Senator and Senator President, it took 15 years, now you're getting back into the ballgame with my age. I appreciate the thought, appreciate what the town is thinking, and I'm looking forward for the affordable housing, but I want to ask the question, what commercial can be used?
What, what can be used for commercial?
Commercial, commercial part of the property can be used.
Mr. Herbert?
I think just at first blush, the best place for a commercial development would be between that solar facility and the YMCA. I think we would look at something to the effect of like a 10-acre office technology park.
Okay, and I know the traffic is a big thing on the MBTA Road, I also know that Cirrus is be happy with what there is, and I'm thinking, again, state government, it's about time they got to see our age again. Thank you.
Mr. Rush?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. For the $4.8 million for the acquisition, is that a negotiated price, so we're not really looking at a unfriendly taking?
Mr. Herbert?
That is a negotiated price that is consummated in a purchase and sale agreement with the landowner, yes.
And I just wanted to point out, because council will point this out all the time, she generally insists on that taking language in cases of problem with the title. Right, counsel?
That's correct.
I understand that.
I just wanted to let everyone else know.
During the presentation, it was talking about the purchase doesn't include this or that, and we're going to get land deeded back. If we're buying, if we're acquiring this property, what, I guess it was a little confusing as to why are we getting stuff deeded back if we supposedly already own it?
So, maybe you could put the map up again, Mike, and clarify what we would be buying and what we'd be getting?
Okay. So, really, all, so what we are buying would be, this is going to work a lot better. So, what we would be buying is all of this land out here, and again, it goes up through the north towards Magunko, with the exception of this parcel right here, and then this parcel right here. However, once the purchase is made, it triggers two separate events that aren't part of the purchase, okay? So, the landowner has agreed to donate 20 to 24 acres of Lot 2 to the town, even though that's not part of the purchase. He has agreed to do that. Town council's getting, I mean, it's a requirement as part of the purchase and sale. And also, the 12 acre, 12 and a half acres will go to the YMCA. So, we're only purchasing that piece, but yet we're controlling a good section of land outside of that.
Okay, so when it says Lot 2, we're not really purchasing the land west of the access road?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, on the-
And your last question, Mr. Rush.
Yes, on the land we are purchasing, it looks like it's encompassing some of the contaminated land, which we didn't own before. What liabilities are we assuming, and do we have any indemnities for it?
Mr. Herbert, or Miss Mead, sorry.
So, the town is not purchasing any part of the cap. The town is purchasing a portion of the property that has the GRE on it, which is like an activity and use limitation, and so, it's not contaminated, but it has restrictions on what can be done on certain portions of the property. But most of the strongest restrictions are on those parts which are wetlands. The town still has the ability to do its due diligence and its full title search following the tonight's meeting. The town didn't want to undertake that expense until they knew that the town was going to approve the purchase. Then it has the contingency to do the due diligence to make sure everything is in order to protect the town's interests.
And we will not be assuming the super fund liability?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Nardone?
Thank you. It looks like the Y is kind of close to the cap. Are they okay with that?
Is who okay with that?
The Y. I mean, have they voted this in? I mean, it looks like a stone's throw, so I just want to know, is the Y okay? Is this, are they definitely going to move in, or?
Mr. Herbert?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so they voted on this?
He said yes.
At a board meeting, okay. In the original agreement with the rail transit district, lots 1 and 2 had the water and sewer, a hookup fees waived, which, and then the next thing you know, we're saying that we got a deficit in the water and sewer. Is that still going to remain into effect for the apartments? Are those hookup fees still going to be waived?
Mr. Herbert? I anticipate that the Board of Selectmen would sign a new development agreement with the new developer. However, if there are, if there are restrictions that follow the original covenant and development agreement with Mr. Gainer, we'd have to honor those.
Okay, so it is possible we're going to get a water and sewer increase. And three, my third, my third question.
I understand, but you've exceeded your time.
Well, I can't see it.
Well, I can.
But I can't.
Well, you know what? You'll take my word for it. Ms. Margulies?
Can I see it? Can you put it up?
Julie, sit down.
I didn't talk a minute and a half.
Ms. Margulies, and Mr. Herbert, she is right, you do need to get the timer back up there, even though I've got one going up here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Good evening. At 7:27 this morning, at the 7:27 train, the parking lot for the MBTA was 90% full, and there was standing room for people like myself who got on that train. I traveled down 135, which is a two-lane highway, which was very busy, backed up at all the lights that I went through. I traveled them along the long MBTA road, and that's a two-lane road also. I'd like to have some comments from the leaders of this community as to what is the plan to, to expand those roads, to maintain this increased capacity, and what is the safety plan for all those people who will be on that road?
Mr. Herbert?
So, I just want to be clear, the land is going to be developed whether we own it or not. So, it's actually going to be, our plan actually develops it at a lesser density than what is being proposed. Number two, any future development will have to go through the requisite site plan review, special permit process, CONCOM permits, so any type of traffic studies that have to be undertaken as part of that will have to be done.
And, and yes, I agree that those plans would have to be done. We obviously had issues when the apartment buildings went up, but it does not, your, your assumption is that it has to be developed, is only on assuming that it passes all the boards. So, if the planning board says, no, this road is not safe, and, yeah, you know, someone shared my time, so give me just five more seconds.
No, you get some more, because we're still going while Mr. Herbert was speaking.
Okay, thank you, thank you. So, so I would, would question, and would also like the Board of Selectmen to chime in here, does this have to be developed? Because we all go to, well, we all should be paying attention to the planning board. The planning board has a lot of plow power to say, nope, this road is not wide enough, and we cannot hold more capacity on Route 135.
I was going to suggest that maybe counsel answer that question?
It's really a capacity. Is the planning board going to have the ability to prevent anybody?
So, under the current zoning, the, any private developer is only subject to site plan review, and so essentially, the planning board couldn't say no. They could tweak the projects, but they couldn't say no, and that's the current zoning.
Mr. Shear, did you want to add something?
Just, Julie asked a little bit about, she talked a little bit about traffic issues and how wide roads are, and I mean, I think the one thing to keep in mind, we don't have any perfect solutions for all the development that's going on, but at least, this is a place where we're, as, as the town manager said, we're controlling some of the development, and, you know, we're going to continue to have issues on Route 135, and I think it's better to have people living close to the train station than far away and driving on 135. So, this is an effort to at least look at some of those issues and be proactive about it.
Thank you. Mr. Ingram?
Gary Ingram, Olive Street. I was, I noticed on Lot 3 that Lot 3, as defined in the article, encompasses the Nianza cap. I heard that we wouldn't be picking up or be responsible for any of the super fund work, I would assume. Who is going to be responsible for it?
Mr. Herbert?
So, the cap is excluded from the purchase, so the current owner would still retain ownership of that.
So, but does the 127 acres include the cap, or not?
It does, but it's excluded from the purchase, as well as the 12 acres on the YMCA and the piece that's next to the cap as well.
Right, but again, I, I need to get a handle. Is it 127 acres total, including the cap?
The lot size is 127 acres. The purchase of that lot is less than 127 acres.
Okay, but we're, we're being asked to purchase 127 acres?
No, you're not.
I believe it's clear in the warrant that it says it's 95.
Okay.
You have to be careful that the, the lot description is included as 127 acres.
Who will be responsible for the cap?
Mr. Herbert?
Mr. Gainer.
And will Mr. Gainer, because of his responsibility, owning an impermeable surface, be responsible for stormwater, stormwater fees that we've just voted in for wastewater management?
Mr. Herbert?
I don't know if solar panels are consisted, or-
Well, considering the cap is supposedly impermeable-
I think he's referring to the cap, not solar panels.
No, I'm not talking about the solar panels. Solar panels are just going to roll off on the ground, but the cap itself, or it's the impermeable part. And the YMCA, will they also be subject to stormwater fees as the impermeable surface for their buildings and parking lots?
Correct, nonprofits would be included as well.
And would our school system then be also?
Last question.
Yes, thank you.
Madam President?
Thank you. Karen Spilka, Rome Way. I want to start out by thanking all of those that were involved in this potential transaction for your work on this. It's very creative and innovative, and I do want to stress that most likely this will be developed. The prior plan does reflect, as was mentioned, Ashland as it was 20, more than 20 years ago, really. We've changed, we've grown, we've learned a lot, and I want to applaud you for including the Upper Charles River Trail, all of those pieces in recreation, the senior affordable housing, and the preference that would give to Ashland seniors. Ashland has always been a community, is for the 30-plus years I've lived here, that takes care of our residents and our people, and it's something we should be proud of and continuing to do, and the increase in the affordable housing will be a big plus in the long run. But I also want to focus on the Y. I've represented Ashland in the legislature for 17 years. I've also represented Framingham for 17 years, and Hopkinton for 12. Though, I love those towns, this is my hometown. The one thing that, when I look at particularly Framingham, that Framingham has, that Ashland has not, is a Y. And all of the benefits of a Y for the children, the families, the communities, the growth, raising healthy, strong, resilient children, and healthy, strong, resilient families, working with seniors, the programs that, you know, as were mentioned, fall prevention, diabetes, stroke prevention, all of these things. It is and can be the heart of a community and a gathering spot that we do not have right now. So, I think this overall provides a tremendous opportunity for our town that we should not lose sight of, and I urge people to vote yes on this warrant article. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hoffman?
Thank you. I wish also to congratulate the town officials for their forward-looking, multi-phased and multi, never mind, okay. But, for, for not the last time this evening, I'm going to put on my archaeology hat. When Apple Ridge was constructed-
Do you have an actual hat you can put on?
Yes, I actually do, but I don't have it with me.
Next time, bring it.
Okay, I will. Don't subtract that from my time.
No, not going to.
When Apple Ridge was built back in the 80s, there was the discovery of a unique archaeological resource up there, the only so far documented tangible evidence of praying Indian village for Oka Magunko quit. I would expect that portions of the proposed area, which have not been thoroughly restructured by EPA, also would have potential for archaeological resources, and I would urge the town to consider, once it makes it a public land, to engage archaeological consultants to investigate this area in advance of any construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Terrell?
Hi, Cara Terrell, Three Hilldale Place. I'm here as a lifelong resident of Ashland and a resident currently, my children are in the school system, and a member of the Ashland Citizens Action Committee, and our mission had been to really maintain that Nianza had not been forgotten, that we had retold some of the history, but also talked about the current contamination that's still in the town. And I think we've- And I think we've met with the solar company several times, we met with Michael last night, actually, and got a lot of information. We pressed a lot about the safety up there. That's our main concern. We love the idea of the why, the senior housing, and all the other assets that will be coming into this town, but our most important priority has been to maintain that this land is free from any further negative impact, which means that we are on kind of a watchdog group at this point. And the plan that's being proposed by the town is the ideal. The other plan by the landowner would possibly impact negatively these areas that we're still concerned about. So we wanted to promote a yes vote tonight because we've spent the last three years really looking to what the ideal would be for this land, and it was always that the town would purchase it and keep it safe, and maintain that all these committees would be reminded that we don't forget about Nianza and the impact on this town. Thank you.
Thank you. And last comment on this question, Ms. Sulman.
Yeah, 28 Woodridge Lane. On behalf of the Open Space and Recreation Committee, I just wanted to let people know that we voted unanimously to support this as well, for its preservation of open space, for the inclusion of the Ashland Upper Charles Trail, the restoration of the wetlands, and the fact that it's an infinitely better plan than what the developer, Mr. Gaynor, would be doing in its place. I also just want to thank everybody who was involved in this, Michael, Jen, I'm sure, and also Senate President Spilka, because the $3 million bond bill makes this a relatively easy lift. So I hope everyone votes in favor of it.
Thank you, Ms. Sulman. Given that this requires, involves both the acquisition of land and borrowing, and it will require a two-thirds majority vote, we'll start with a show of cards. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. And that passes, but not unanimously. So I declare a two-thirds. The next three articles relate to a new public safety building. Article 7 seeks approval to accept a gift of land on which the building will be built. Article 8 seeks a zoning change for that land, and Article 9 seeks authorization to borrow funds for the project. May I have your attention, please? We are going to treat Articles 7, 8, and 9 as a package for purposes of the presentation and discussion. At the conclusion of the presentation, I will entertain a motion for Article 7, after which we will commence discussion of all three articles together. After the discussion, we will vote on Article 7, then move immediately to a motion and vote on Article 8, and a motion and vote on Article 9. Before introducing the article, I did want to take a moment, though, and thank Karen Spilka, who is with us tonight, recognized for her as Senate President. Because of Karen, we have $25 million towards this project. Without Karen, we would not have $25 million toward this project. Article 7, approved gift of land for public safety building sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept a gift of real property from 28 Exchange Ashland LLC, located at properties located at 12 and 16 Union Street, including approximately 11 and 1/2 acres, and to be used for municipal purposes under the care, custody, and control of the Board of Selectmen, or pass any vote or taking action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town so vote. Mr. Mignati.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here this evening. The first big hurdle for the remaining articles that are here on the warrant for the combined public safety building was on November 4th, when you all voted to approve the public safety building. So with that, all of us who have been working diligently over the last 25-plus years, thank you. Thank you. It's long overdue. I can't believe I'm actually standing up here, speaking on behalf of a new public safety, combined public safety building. It has been discussed for many, many years. I see people out here in the audience, I can see Chief Gonfrati, I'm glad he's here, because it finally came to fruition, and hopefully it will continue through tonight. There are many offices out here that live in town that are here, I thank them. Firefighters, I thank you for supporting us out in the rain on November 4th. And again, Karen, thank you again for what you did behind the scenes for us. The land that we're looking at, it's the Clock Town property. For the townies, you know what we're talking about, the old Natty County property on Route 135. For you new folks, it's 16 and 17 East Union Street. You'll see the sign that says Village of Americas on it. That's the property that's being gifted to us, 3.77 acres. Now, I know that there is some wording in here to go up to 11.5 acres. We hit a little snag on that, but we're still working on it. Okay, we're not going to give up on that. And it was unfortunate that the snag came later, a little later this afternoon. And so with the diligent work for the town manager, Mr. Herbert, and for Jen, and town council, we'll get this all straightened out, and hopefully it'll be something that we can do maybe in the spring, at our annual town meeting in May. So, it's 3.77 acres. It's more than enough to do what we need to do, to put a beautiful new public safety building in. So that way, this town can be proud, we're proud anywhere of our police and fire departments, but they'll have a place that they can work as professionals and not be dysfunctional by having the head of the building in another location and have the body someplace else. They'll all be unified in one building. And for the female officers and firefighters, they'll be all under the same roof, no trailers, no nothing. So we'll all be combined, and it'll all be a new building that we all can be proud of and say, yeah, Ashland, you did the right thing. But again, that's the land aspect of it. Can I continue, sir, with the other articles?
Yeah, all at once.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Sometimes I get old and I don't hear what I'm saying. Okay, for the zoning bylaw, the Wildwood Mixed Use District. Years ago, the reason why the zoning was changed, it was, you couldn't have anything 24/7. If someone wanted to develop that property, put a store in, they could be open 24/7. So the zoning is, you can't stay open 24/7. Well, hold on here, we have a problem. Police and fire do not have a day off. They're open 24/7, unless you want to change that. I don't think so. So we have to change the zoning, so that way the fire and police departments can build the building and stay open 24/7 on that one piece of property, the 3.77 that was gifted to us by Mr. Fafford. The other article, which is the acceptance of the bond authorization, thank you to, again, Senate President Spilka. Our neighboring town, our neighbors in Selpro are going through the same process right now, and they're flipping the bill for the entire project, over $40 million. And they even lost prime property right downtown. So we're very fortunate. We're going to cost us $3.5 million over a 20-year period, which averages out to $30 a year. I don't know where you can go for that. You can go to Burns and get a nice steak dinner, I suppose, but at the same token, you're not going to get the protection of police and fire. So I urge you all, if you have any questions, please feel free, I will deter any questions that have to do with the building to the two chiefs that will be directing their personnel in that building, if you have any additional questions. But I urge you all to support 7, 8, and 9. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mignati. To allow discussion, I entertain a motion for town votes to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept a gift of real property from 58 Exchange Ashland LLC, a property located at 12 and 16 Union Street, as more fully set forth as map 15 Lot 76 and Lot 77 in the town of Ashland Assessor's Maps, including up to 11.55 acres, more or less, and to be used for municipal purposes under the care, custody, and control of the Board of Selectmen. Do I have such a motion?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Crowe. But you can second it while you're standing in line. Could you?
Yeah, because we are combining the discussions of 7, 8, and 9...
I was going to ask you for that.
...the planning board report on Article 8.
I was going to ask you for that before, but you can give it to me.
The planning board conducted a public hearing on October 11th to allow 24-hour municipal use. The planning board voted 3 to 0 to recommend the town meeting pass this zoning amendment. We then held a separate public hearing this past Monday on November 26, 2018, to allow municipal cemetery use in that area, and the planning board voted 4 to 0 to recommend that the town meeting pass that portion of the zoning amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kendall.
So the school committee on our October 24, 2008, meeting voted unanimously to support Article 9, which is the town's portion to fund the project.
Thank you. Ms. Spilka.
Thank you. Karen Spilka, Rome Way. I just want to add, I think Joe did a great job in explaining the problems concerned in our police and fire. And again, since I moved here more than 30 years ago, we've talked about the need for a public safety building, so it's beyond time at this point. So I urge everybody to vote yes on this. But, and I'm proud to have been able to put that funding into the bond bill. I just wanted to say that the next step for the town would be to be working with the administration when the time is right, the administration and the governor to release the funds so that it will help the town. And again, I hope that everybody supports the police and fire. It's not only for their safety, it's for all of our safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Marty Ring, 42 Bay Colony. Just some clarification, Joe. I'm a little confused because the paper says 11 acres and change, and you said 3 and change.
Let me, you want to finish your question, Marty?
That's the question. I just want that clarified.
Do you want to speak to that, Mr. Herbert? Or Joe, you want to do it?
Either one, there's a matter.
Sure, Mr. Herbert.
So the whole Clock Town parcel is 11.55 acres. Back in May, the landowner, Mr. Fafford, and the Board of Selectmen signed a gift agreement for four acres of that 11-acre parcel. Since that time, we have had a discussion with the landowner about the gifting of the remainder of the parcel, but we have not consummated that in a gift agreement yet. So, yeah, but we only need the four for the public safety building.
Well, but part of that is desirable for the Upper Charles Trail.
It absolutely is.
And the motion is reading that we're accepting 11 acres.
The motion reads up to...
Up to. Thanks.
Mr. Manager, would you pop that screen back up, please?
Oh.
Thank you. Mr. Sone.
Yes, again, good evening, Mark Sone. And it's taken, what, maybe two, maybe three generations to get this far? From the recent anniversary of what happened on Workman Circle to today, and yet the town grew, citizens outnumbered, and now we have to thank the police and fire by finally getting an idea to get the buildings together. Thank you. State House Representatives, I'm not going to name the names, I'm too deep involved in anything else, but I'm thinking and hoping that it doesn't take too long. And yes, Selpro went through the very same thing, and did not go through the proper steps, and so I was thinking them forever. But that's Selpro, here. We have people, we got the city, we got the police, fire, and they're going to ever grow. Now, from Toyota Park to the penthouse. Thank you.
Ms. Margulies.
Hi, just a point of clarification. I just wanted to make sure, because there has been some previous conversation, that the property that Fafford owns concerning America Boulevard, the property that's on the chestnut end of the America Boulevard complex condos, is not involved in any way with this process. I just wanted to clarify.
Mr. Herbert's shaking his head, yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Nardone.
I hate to say this, but...
You don't have to.
But I have to say this, right. Okay, this, no matter what anyone says, because I do pay attention, this project has not been publicly vetted. There was no public committee, no public minutes, no opportunity for any citizen to even ask why it's here. If you look at it on a map, it's, I wouldn't want to live on House Street, let's put it that way. And I just, I just don't understand it. We got a choice of one, we're all here, people are all, you know, came in here to support it, but we've never had any public hearings, and I just don't get it. Okay, that's my first comment. Second, and I've been trying to get this information for five weeks, what, can you please explain what priced home would get the $30?
Okay. Mr. Herbert.
I believe that was a home assessed at $375,000, so it wasn't the average single-family home, it was the average home price, so it would include condos.
Okay, if you could just quickly, if, because I've got 20 seconds, if the house, if a house costs $600,000, what would they pay?
It's simple math, Julie.
No, well, then do it if it's simple.
You've got, I can give you a calculator, you can do it.
I can tell you in 10 minutes, nine minutes.
We're not going to do math for you here, not simple basic math.
Because it's hot more than dirty.
And to be clear, the $30 is for a house assessed at $379,000. Clearly, a house assessed more is going to pay more. That's simple math. Get out your calculators, folks. Ms. Bennett.
Claudia Bennett, 9 cents, no way. My heart's beating fast, guys, so keep an eye on me.
You guys want to reposition over there, some of you?
You know, I just want to take this moment to publicly thank, first of all, Senate President Spilka for her hard work, and geez, Karen, if we'd known you could do this a few years ago, we could have made it happen sooner, I think. You know, I also want to thank our public safety folks. I think, first of all, I think there have been times through the years where the town has needed some things, sometimes for our children, sometimes for other reasons, and they've had to take a second seat. So I'm so happy that we're here tonight. And finally, I just want to publicly thank you for the support that you've given my family for the last years. And please, Mr. Moderator, tell Mrs. Nardone or anyone else that would like to speak to me about vetting this process, that we need to do right by our public safety people, please feel free to call me. Thank you.
And the last comment on this question?
Jan Commissar, Panview Lane. I have a question about Article 9, the bond authorization.
Yep.
Is that the amount that we voted on at the election for the debt exclusion?
The debt exclusion, go ahead, you should answer.
No, you go ahead.
There's no dollar amount on the ballot question, they're not allowed.
Right, but that is what, this is the amount that we are proposing, and that's all the amounts we are proposing to be covered by that vote.
Town manager shaking his head, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion having concluded, we'll move to a vote first on Article 7, which requires a simple majority. Those in favor of Article 7, the acceptance of the gift of land, please raise your cards. Thank you. And those opposed. That passes unanimously. Article 8. Apen zoning bylaw, Wildwood Mixed Use District, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen and Planning Board. See if the town will vote to amend the town of Ashland zoning bylaw, Chapter 282, as indicated in your handbooks, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee deferred its recommendation to town meeting. You heard the planning board issued their report. Discussion having already occurred, to allow vote, I entertain a motion that the town adopt the amendment to zoning bylaw as printed in Article 8 in the warrant. Do I have such a motion? Given the prior discussion, we'll move to an immediate vote. This is a zoning bylaw change that will require a two-thirds majority. We'll start with a card count. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you very much. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article 9, bond authorization for public safety, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. To see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money to be expended by the Board of Selectmen for design and engineering services and related legal costs, all related to the construction of a public safety facility, and determine whether the appropriation shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise, or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town appropriate $3.5 million for the purposes of paying for the design and engineering services, construction oversight, and related legal costs, all related to the construction of a public safety facility. Having had a previous discussion, we'll move right to a vote. I'll entertain a motion that the town appropriates $3,500,000 for the purposes of paying for the design and engineering services, construction, oversight, and related legal costs, all related to the construction of a public safety facility. To meet this appropriation, the town treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under, in person, to match general law, Chapter 44, or person to any other enabling authority, and that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium apply to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote, and according to the master general law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized... forty-four, Section Twenty, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. Do I have such a motion? Again, given the vote discussed, we will move right to an immediate vote. This is borrowing, and will also require two-thirds. All those in favor of Article Nine, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. I declare a two-thirds. I, I don't usually do this, but when I was a selectman over ten years ago, we tried to get this project started. So I join those, those out there who have been waiting for this for a very long time. Article Ten, Ashland Affordable Housing Trust.
Moderator. Can we take a break? Obviously, this was a one-artikel meeting, and, and while the bulk of the people weave, and we can't hear you, we'd like to take a break.
Article Ten, Ashland Affordable Housing Trust, sponsored by the Community Preservation Committee. So the answer's no, Gary. To see if the town will vote to appropriate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to provide it to the Town of Ashland Affordable Housing Trust, to be used for the creation and preservation of affordable housing pursuant to its enabling legislation under Chapter forty-four B, Community Preservation Act, and that to meet this appropriation, the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, be transferred from the Affordable Housing Reserve account from the Community Preservation Fund balance, or passing any voter taking the action relative thereto. At their meeting tonight before town meeting, the CPC voted to withdraw Article Ten at tonight's town meeting with the intent that it's presented at a future town meeting. But I do believe someone from the CPC wanted to say something about the article, am I wrong? Am I, you're fine? You're good? Okay, so they don't want to say anything. So Article Ten is being withdrawn, and we will move to Article Eleven. Articles eleven and twelve are related, and we'll present and discuss them together. After final action on Article Eleven, we'll move to an immediate motion and vote on Article Twelve. Article Eleven, accept easement for Riverwalk, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. To see if the town will vote to accept an easement from Kevin and Amy Kennedy over the land located at twenty-four Sudbury Road, Ashland, Mass., including three hundred and fifty-nine square feet, more or less, for the purpose of the Riverwalk to be under the care, custody, and control of the Board of Selectmen, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate and execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate same, or pass any vote, or taking the action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town vote to accept the easement as described in the article. Ms. Ball?
Thank you. Thank you. As Michael had...
You're good.
As Michael had mentioned earlier in his town report, you can't hear me. Is this one not working?
There you go, just have to be closer.
As Michael had mentioned earlier in his town report, we are in the first phase of the Riverwalk project, and we're coming to the end. That project really encompasses doing the trail work and the observation platform and the ADA compliance trail that leads out to that observation platform. You still can't hear me?
Can we turn her mic up a little bit?
Yeah.
Or use a different mic?
Oh, boy. I know.
Now, stand up and turn around.
Yes. Good thing I really like Brittany. As Michael had mentioned earlier, the Riverwalk project is in its current Phase One, and we're coming to the completion of that. So that's really the trail work, both, the trail work along, starting at Ponderosa Road and traversing along Sudbury Road, and then also there's a spur off that is ADA compliant that will lead out to an observation platform. We're in the final stages of that, and that should end in the next month or so. And then we'll do Phase Two, which will include a bridge that will go over the Sudbury River Inlet and go over from the Sudbury Road, um, road over to Mill Pond Park, which will be beautiful. We were lucky enough to be able to, through a lot of work from Open Space and Recreation Committee, create a trail that can really traverse along primarily town-owned property with the exclusion of one property. And so we had to work with the landowners, Mr. and Mrs. Kennedy, to obtain an easement. We were able to do that. So they, it's about a hundred feet along the back end of their property. We'll, we'll obtain a four-foot easement that allows the trails to continue all the way along Sudbury so that we can connect it properly with a pedestrian bridge. We were able to obtain that with a memorandum of understanding, and with that, um, that agreement, we were also agreed to convey, so in Article Nine, we were, I'm sorry, Article Twelve. We were, um, agreed to convey approximately eight hundred and twenty-five feet of land from town-owned land that, that abuts it. I believe it's up here, so. And that land is currently cleared land, they've been maintaining it for years. The way the trail will work, it's actually a small hill there, there'll be four granite steps, and this will also, the conveyance of this land will allow Mr. and Mrs. Kennedy to continue to maintain a vegetative screening so that they can maintain some privacy. It's the only area in the entire trail that isn't protected by any sort of wooded area. And so this will maintain some privacy, both for the people who are utilizing this recreational amenity, but also for the landowner.
Thank you, Jen. To allow discussion, enter a motion that the town accept an easement from Kevin and Amy Kennedy over the land located at twenty-four Sudbury Road, Ashland, Mass., which deed is recorded in Book Two-Six-Two-Five-Nine, Page one eighty of the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds, as set forth on that certain plan by Green International Affiliates, Inc., Westford, Mass., and dated nine fourteen, two thousand and eighteen, and which is on file with the town clerk, including three hundred and fifty-nine square feet, more or less, an area indicated as trail easement, for the purpose of the Riverwalk to be under the care, custody, and control of the Board of Selectmen, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate and execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate same. Do I have such a motion? And I'm sorry, we're going to just, not, I mean, we're going to have a discussion for both eleven and twelve at the same time.
Okay. So, again, on behalf of the Open Space and Recreation Committee, thank you to Michael, thank you to Jen for all of your work on this, and thank you to the Kennedys for their collaboration on this project. It was really, we couldn't be doing it without them. So we really appreciate their, their help, and of course, we support and hope that people will vote in favor of both of these articles.
Thank you. Ms. Nardone?
Thanks. This is more a point of order. I've been sitting in my chair getting really upset, and you, Mr. Moderator, you say at the beginning of every meeting there shouldn't be any bullying, and I felt bullied by you at the last question, and it's happened to me before, at my, making fun of me at my expense because I get up here and have a different opinion. And I, I don't think it's right. If we're not going to have bullying, then I don't think you should do that to me. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rush?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The, the map shown was kind of hard to read, so I wonder if you could try to increase it and delineate what the easement is and what is the proposed transference property.
Do you want me to use the pointer? Michael, get the pointer. So, this right here is the easement, right here, along the shaded piece right here, oops, oh, boy.
There we go.
So, right here, so, so the trail is coming all the way, you know, it's coming from over here, and in this one spot, we're all in town property here, and right here is the property line, and then we cross over into their, their property here. Because there isn't enough space here to actually construct the trail on our own town-owned property. And so working with them, and then right about here is where it starts to go up a small hill, and right here, and then it goes back into the woods. So they're, they would actually own, right now, this right here is all town property. They are currently maintaining that, and they will, with us being able to convey that to them, they will put a vegetative screening so that they can protect, this space right here is all, is all cleared, and they'll be able to protect their property.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing nothing further, we'll move to a vote on Article Eleven. This vote seeks to accept an easement, which requires two-thirds majority. We'll start with a show of cards. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article Twelve, dispose of real property, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. To see if the town will vote to change the use, which is currently general municipal of a portion of land located off of Zero Sudbury Road, including more, eight hundred and twenty-four square feet, more or less, to the purpose of conveyance and/or transfer, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell, transfer, or otherwise convey same, and take any legal action necessary to effectuate said conveyance or transfer, and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate and execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate same, or pass any vote, or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town so vote. To allow a vote, I'll enter a motion that the use of a portion of the land located off of Zero Sudbury Road, including eight hundred and twenty-four square feet, more or less, is more fully set forth on that certain plan by Green International Affiliates, Inc., Westford, Mass., and dated nine fourteen, two thousand and eighteen, and which is on file with the town clerk, be changed to the purpose of conveyance and/or transfer, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell, transfer, or otherwise convey the property described, and take any legal action necessary to effectuate said conveyance or transfer, and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate and execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate same. Do I have such a motion? Given the prior discussion, we'll now move to an immediate vote. The article seeks to dispose of land, which requires two-thirds majority. Start with a show of cards, all those in favor. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article eleven, sorry, Article Thirteen, trying to go back in time. Approve purchase-taking of land, rear Oregon Road, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. See if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to purchase, acquire, or take by eminent domain, and to raise and appropriate either by appropriation, borrowing, or otherwise sum of money to fund said purchase or taking, along with all associated legal and engineering costs necessary of approximately seven point one acres located at Zero, Zero, Oregon Road rear. And further, that the board be authorized to grant back any necessary utility, access, and/or egress easements to the grantors. The acquisition of said land having been determined to be necessary for the health and welfare of the inhabitants of Ashland, and to be used for passive open space purposes under the care, custody, and control of the Board of Selectmen, or pass any vote, or taking the action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town so vote, and that to pay for said acquisition along with all associated legal and engineering costs required to effectuate the said purchase, that the town transfer one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars from free cash. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael, if you could at least point out a little bit more clearly the, the section that we're, it's the red, the highlighted red section. All right, so Article Thirteen is a request for authorization of purchase this seven point ten acre parcel located on Oregon Road, in which abuts the town forest. This is very consistent with the board's strategy and vision to protect the town forest, to increase it when we can. The acquisition and affiliated costs, we discussed in Article Two, so it would require that, that transfer, this, we would be authorizing it in this article, and, and the board asks that you support Article Thirteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. To allow discussion, I'll enter a motion that the town votes to authorize the Board of Selectmen to purchase, acquire, or take by eminent domain approximately seven point one acres located at Map Four, Lot Sixteen, and as more fully described in a deed recorded in the Middlesex South Registry of Deeds, Book Two-Six-Three-Fifty-Five, Page one eighty-two, located at Zero Oregon Road rear, as more fully set forth on the sketch planned dated eleven, seven, two thousand and eighteen, entitled Article Thirteen, Rear Oregon Road, on file in the town clerk's office, and further, that the board be authorized to grant back any necessary, necessary utility, access, and/or egress easements to the grantors. The acquisition of said land having been determined to be necessary for the health and welfare of the inhabitants of Ashland, and to be used for passive open space purposes under the care, custody, and control of the Board of Selectmen, and that to pay for said acquisition along with all associated legal and engineering costs required to effectuate the said purchase, that the town transfer one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars from free cash. Do I have such a motion?
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Rooney?
I have a friendly amendment. You mentioned the town forest, and I'd just like to add, Board of Selectmen, comma, provided that it is added to the town forest.
Ms. Mead?
You want me to show you?
I, I think she's good.
Your amendment would say, under the care, custody, and control of the Board of Selectmen, comma, provided, it's provided to the town forest?
That is added to the town forest.
So if it weren't added to the town forest, then who would it be under the care, custody, and control of? So you actually want it for the purpose? Your, your goal is to have it for the purpose of being added to the town forest?
Yes.
So then...
It doesn't say that in here. It was referenced in Mr. Mitchell talked, and it would make sense to put it in town forest.
So we have it to be used for passive open space purposes as part of the town forest. How about that amendment?
Sounds lovely.
Okay. Thank you.
Does the Board of Selectmen sponsoring the amendment, the motion, okay with that?
Yes.
I see head nods. Okay. And to be used for passive open space purposes, so, does everyone understand what that amendment would be? Did you say no? Town clerk said no. So, and to be used for passive open space purposes as part of the town forest. Did you get that behind me? I'm just making notes. Hang on a second, please. Is there a, so that's considered a substitute motion made? Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, let's move to, thank you. Let's take care of that before we discuss it. So how about we move to a vote on the substitute motion, and then we can continue discussion? All those in favor of the sub, make in addition to substitute motion, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That substitute potion, potion, that substitute motion passes unanimously.
No.
I'm sorry. There was a, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. So that passes, but not unanimously. Thank you for that correction. Send it to town council. Okay, back to discussion. Who, I think you were next, Mr. Rush?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm, I'm up here just to confirm that the one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar is a negotiated price in a cooperative transaction.
Town council and Mr., and town manager shaking their head, yes.
Thank you.
Dr. Hoffman?
Might I have the pointer, please?
Oh, I don't know if you can, there's a whole issue about signing that out earlier, so.
Yeah, you'd be doing better with you wearing the hat.
I assume you don't want to point at the timer.
Right, okay. Our Time Forest has a marvelous collection of archaeological monuments in it. I've taken a number of tours through there of townspeople, and I know of two of these monuments located approximately here and here. I have every reason to expect that this new parcel, since most, it's very heavily concentrated throughout here, that this new parcel will also have such monuments positioned within it. These are stone monuments that have been confirmed by a native person whom we head out to the woods if we go Monday to be of native origin. So I am certainly strongly in favor of the motion, and you can have your pointer back.
Thank you. Sorry, Ms. Summan?
With the friendly amendment, the Open Space and Recreation Committee voted unanimously to support this, provided an amendment to add the acreage to the town forest was added.
So you were scheming before town meeting?
We were scheming, yes.
As long as you're open and honest about it. Any further discussion? Given that this involves an appropriation for the acquisition of land, it will require two-thirds majority. We'll start with a show of cards, all those in favor. Thank you. And opposed. Trying to make sure I don't miss one this time. That passes unanimously. Article Fourteen, MWR A Bond for I and I Works, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. See if the town will appropriate a sum of money to make infiltration and inflow improvements to the town sewer system, including improvements for infiltration and inflow reduction purposes that are eligible for loans or other financial assistance through the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, I and I Local Financial Assistance Program, Phase Ten Funding Allocation. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Department of Public Works, determining whether such amounts should be raised by taxation, borrowing, transfer from available funds or otherwise, and to authorize the Selectmen to apply for and accept any grants that may be available to pay costs of such projects, or pass any vote, or take any other action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town vote to appropriate four hundred and twenty thousand dollars to make infiltration and inflow improvements to the town's sewer system. Mr. Sheer?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I get, this is a very exciting one, but it's, it is, it is important. This is a, an important clean water measure, and as you could see, it's, you know, it's to basically fix leaks in the sewer system and... to basically fix leaks in the sewer system and is heavily encouraged by the state. So my understanding is that we're getting three-quarters of this reimbursed by a grant, and the, the remainder would be a low-interest loan, so we request your support for this important measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shear. To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town appropriate four hundred and twenty thousand dollars to make infiltration and inflow improvements to the town sewer system, including improvements for infiltration and inflow reduction purposes that are eligible for loans or other financial assistance through the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, INI Local Financial Assistance Program, Phase Ten Funding Allocation. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Department of Public Works, determining whether such amounts should be raised by taxation, borrowing, transfer from available funds or otherwise, and to authorize the selectmen to apply for and accept any grants that may be available to pay costs of such projects and to meet said appropriation. The town treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Master General Law, Chapter forty-four, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, unless any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Master General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by like amount. Do I have such a motion?
No votes.
Discussion. Mr. Ingram.
Mr. Ingram, Olive Street. Just a couple of questions. Number one, considering during the article on the discussion of the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, this particular situation of inflow and infiltration into our sewer system was mentioned as one of the reasons for the problems with stormwater runoff and pollution, why is this not being addressed under the auspices of your new enterprise fund?
Mr. Herbert? Has this a sewer?
All right, then, the second question is, we have a sewer enterprise fund. Why is this not being addressed under the sewer enterprise fund?
Mr. Herbert?
I believe it actually would be under the sewer enterprise fund, but this is, as was said before, this is four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, seventy-five percent of which is a grant, twenty-five percent which is a no-interest loan. I don't know why.
But as, as being a grant, as being a grant, in that we're going to recover it, why can't we address it? I mean, we're paying, excuse me, I believe the budget for sewer is somewhere in six million dollar range. I mean, I would think that if we're going to recover so much of it from a grant, that we would be able to, I mean, it would be approximately the same thing as taking the amount of money out of the water and sewer fund in order to purchase the old Girl Scout camp. I mean, this is, this is a necessary thing. Why wouldn't it necessarily fall onto the sewer enterprise fund and be reimbursed to it if we received grants from state to, to perform the, the work?
Mr. Herbert?
I, I think Doug can answer from an operational perspective, but are you asking, why don't we raise rates to pay for this work as opposed to getting a grant?
I believe that you have a surplus amount within both funds at this point in time, and considering that it's going to be reimbursed, I would think that the temporary use of those surplus funds in order to handle lowering our sewer output so that we're not charged as much by the Deer Island Plant or Framingham would be to our advantage.
Mr. Herbert?
To take advantage of the grant, we have to utilize this language and borrow accordingly. I, per, per the MWRA.
This is a legal thing?
Yeah.
Ms. Mead.
So this is, in, in my time here, this is probably the fourth or fifth one of these that the town has done, and the language is prescribed by the MWRA. So we actually had to come back, some people might remember, we had to come back from a special town meeting to an annual town meeting because the MWRA disapproved our language. So the language is a pre-approved by the MWRA and prescribed by them.
But it wasn't for the, the amount of money used to buy the Girl Scout camp?
No.
This is not...
This is not that.
Okay. I, I understand that one's water and sewer and one's just sewer, but, you know, your answer.
Mr. DeSoto.
Okay.
You want to lift, you could lift the microphone up, Mark, you don't have to bend over.
I don't want to break it on myself. Okay, again, Mark DeSoto for the third time, counting. I would like to ask the question, it is by sewer, and it's a grant. What parts of town would be, would be worked on? What areas of town, what streets, and what neighborhoods, if neighborhoods?
Mr. Herbert.
There are older streets.
This is a town-wide program, so this would be utilized town-wide.
And how do you grade, first users, second users, A, B, C, what the, what's going to be?
Highly prioritized, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Mr. Herbert.
Yeah, so Doug Small and his team, I see one of his team members over there, they have a prioritization plan that they utilize. Again, it's town-wide, and they would use that to prescribe where they start first, go second, et cetera.
Okay, yeah, and I go with, my last thing would be saying, to this, a DPW, Doug Small, I called once and you came up and saw what's going on. So I'm approving all teamwork working together. Thank you.
See, no further discussion. This is a borrowing article, require two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously.
No.
No.
Gary, it wasn't on purpose. If you guys would all sit closer, it'd be easier for me, my old eyes. Article nineteen, sorry, fifteen, acceptance of General Law, Chapter, Section fifty-eight, municipal lien charges amend town bylaws sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. See if the town will vote to adopt the provision of General Law, Chapter... Okay, I'm going to stop myself. I need to declare two-thirds on that previous article. Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to adopt the provision of General Law, Chapter forty, Section fifty-eight, and in doing so amend the town of Ashland general bylaws to create a new section, twenty-six-six municipal charges liens within Chapter twenty-six finances, which would provide for the imposition of a lien on real property for the failure or refusal of an owner of real property in the town to pay any charge, fine, penalty, and/or fee assessed against the owner as is printed in the warrant book. And there's a lot of printing on the warrant book. Or pass any vote or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee recommends the town so vote. Ms. Greaves.
Good evening, thank you. I didn't know who was talking. There we go. Good evening, thank you for those that are still here. I know the exciting stuff is done, but all of this is just as important to what's going on in town. By adopting this general chapter from the state, it will allow us to put liens on property when people have not paid their fees. There was concern, you know, what if people are having hardship? It allows us to be judge, you know, we can judge how we're going to use this. So if there's circumstances as to why they're not paying, we can talk about that and we can, and we can use that. But by allowing, by passing this chapter and the next article, which I know you haven't introduced yet, Mr. Moderator, but by passing this chapter and then the bylaw in the next article, it allows us to do these liens and it gives us a little more control when people have not paid fees. So it's a way for the town to help recoup some of that money should, I mean, should that be necessary. A good example is what was going on with what was owed by Mr. Gaynor early on with the MBTA overages. Had we had this, we could have put something in place to lien his property, because if someone doesn't have permits in front of us, which we sometimes hold off on. So this is just a way for us to manage and hopefully get money that is owed the town.
Thank you, Ms. Greaves.
You're welcome.
To allow discussion, I'll entertain a motion that the town accepts General Law, Chapter fifty, Section fifty-eight, and in doing so amend the town of Ashland general bylaws to create a new section, Section twenty-six-six municipal charges liens within Chapter twenty-six finances, as printed in Article fifteen of the warrant. Do I have such a motion?
No votes.
Discussion. You won the raise, Mr. Rush.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Other than the example you cited, is, is there a general problem we have with trying to collect the fines, charges, and whatnot, or?
Who's going to answer that? Ms. Mead.
If I could, Mr. Moderator, Mr. Rush, this, actually, this is another tool or another arrow in the quiver of the treasurer and the Board of Selectmen. So the unpaid fines and fees due to the town get collected under the next section that we're going to talk about when somebody applies for a permit, which is a little more cumbersome. This section, Section fifty-eight, allows specifically for the items listed in paragraph C, which are essentially, the ones that we have listed are the only ones that can be collected upon, which are essentially breaches of contract with the town. So if you have a development agreement and you breach it, then the treasurer can immediately lien the property without the need of a hearing or going to court for an injunction. So we have development agreements, we have other contracts with the town, or violations of tax agreements. So all of those right now would require us to either have a hearing and/or go to court, and if we adopt this section, then the treasurer can merely assess the lien and the town has lien the real property.
Yeah, is, is the mass general law we're implementing here, is that a recent general law, or are we just implementing it now and it's been around for a while?
It's, it's been around for a little while, probably as long as Section fifty-seven, which is the next one, but it's more recently been, started to be used by municipalities, and the reason is there are more and more municipalities who have entered into, A, tax agreements or development agreements as part of regular control of development across their communities.
Thank you.
Ms. Jersey.
Catherine Jersey, eleven Rodman Road. I have a couple of questions. So the, the way this seems to read is really like any fee, so someone didn't pay their water bill, and, and I, Yolanda had mentioned, I mean, that's my concern, that this could be used against somebody who's having hard times, and I don't see any language about that. And then the second thing is, does this give a ability, I mean, there's, true story, Worcester County, I think the town of Worcester had an outside agency said, hey, we'll, we'll buy these from you and they'll collect ten cents on a dollar, and went to collection agencies, and people did lose their homes over this, over potentially a water bill or a small amount of money. So I have concerns about this, and unless there's some language to kind of put, put some parameters on that, I would recommend not voting for it.
Ms. Mead.
So in fact, the, I believe that the reference you're speaking of in Worcester County relates to uncollected real estate taxes, which has a separate statute that can be sold in bulk to an outside agency, not this. This section of the statute, Section fifty-eight, specifically says that you have to list in the bylaw which items you're going to collect on, and if you look at Section C applicability, it is limited to the three items that I said and nothing else. If the Board of Selectmen wanted to expand what it would be applied to, they would have to come back to town meeting to do so.
Mr. Ingram.
To expound on that, under Section C, number C, or small C, you list violations of tax agreements. Define tax agreements for us.
Those, that would be like the tax agreement that you agreed to earlier this evening with the, for the solar facility. It would be like a, a payment in lieu of tax agreement, those kinds of tax agreements.
But not the implied taxes that we pay the town?
No, those, no, that is not a tax agreement. That's your regular real estate tax bill.
And to speak to the last speaker's also concern, I, I think to do this on a monthly basis imposes an additional hardship and time and trouble on our all overworked town employees as it is. I have a substitute motion here. My only change is that this in Section E, under small B, instead of at the end of each month, it would be every six months.
Do we have some comment on, before I address that motion, does there a response from that? Good bet, Ms. Mead?
My, my argument against that is that in this instance, it's limited to these contract items, and so you want to, you want to give the flexibility to the treasurer that if you have a breach of an agreement, to go at the end of that month and apply the lien, you don't want to have them have to wait six months to apply the lien, because then the person who owes the money could sell the land which is securing the lien.
I understand the pitfalls, but I also understand that builders, developers, owners of land that are building have cash flow problems and may or may not, you know, be able to meet all their obligations every month. I've seen it in front of the planning board quite a number of times where people have not been able to pay fees and assorted other costs at any one time.
Can I just ask to clarify here, because I'm a little confused up here. From what Gary's saying, it sounds as if Gary is thinking that if somebody's a month late, this applies, and I'm not sure if that's the case or not. I want to make sure, I want to be clear.
Yes, that is correct. I mean, if for some reason I have a cash flow problem...
Right, I, I understand what you're saying, but I want to make sure that that's what's intended by this. I, I'm confused.
I'm just giving, unless you want to put in, in, in some type of, of language stating that...
But Gary, Gary, hang on a second. I, I'm not suggesting that your, your substitute motion is good, bad, or indifferent.
No.
I just want to make sure we're all saying the same thing.
Correct.
So, so this is a lien? It doesn't require the payment. It secures the payment for the town. It protects the town's interest. So if you were to go to sell the property which is securing the town's interests, the town would be paid.
I, I understand, I, I just...
It's not going to make you, it's going to secure the payment, it's not going to make you make the payment until you go to sell the security.
Without additional time, so that we're not doing it on a monthly basis, the only other way to solve this would be to put in additional language that says that some type of discussion has to take place with the defaulter before you go to a lien. Otherwise, you're imposing an additional cost on that person in order to remove that lien besides the payment that, that needs to be made.
Well, the, so the, the issue, and, you know, this is the legal perspective, not the policy perspective, but the issue is we have these agreements that people have made with the town in exchange for the town giving them something. And the issue is the town should be paid according to those agreements, or at least have their payments secured. And so instead of giving other people money, the town should be paid. That's the legal perspective, not the policy perspective.
I have no problem with the town collecting their money, to tell you the truth.
Ms., Ms. Greaves, I want to just play this out before we deal with that amendment, Gary. Ms. Greaves?
So I...
Can you speak closer to that mic, please, Yolanda?
I have to wait for him to turn it on.
Oh, okay.
So as we've said, this is a tool to be used. This is not saying that at the end of every month, we're going to go and put liens on things. As we see things at the end of every month, and to legal standpoint, if we wait six months, there could be then other things that have happened. And so at the end of the month, if there are liens that are unpaid, we're going to look at that and then a decision will be made.
Can, can I just ask a question, because it might address some of this? Is there some kind of number, Jen, of how many of these things we have? Do we have hundreds, dozens, handful?
No, it, it's typically, if you think about, the town has, currently has maybe two or three tax agreements. We have a couple of development agreements. Sometimes the planning board enters into an agreement with regard to the permits they receive. So it's a handful of instances.
Okay, so, so let's just put this in perspective that the scope of what we're talking about at this point is, is a handful of items. That just informed the conversation that way.
I understand.
So do you, Gary, still want to go ahead and make your substitute motion?
If the opposition is, is that great to, you know, extending an additional period of time to these people, and/or we're not going to require mandatory discussion with the person before we impose a lien, yes, I'd like to move it out to six months.
Okay. Let's do this. Give me again what the substitute you'd like to make is. Julie, I apologize, we'll get back to you.
Okay. It's all right. I'll sing a song.
Okay, my question to you is, you want to change it, and fees that have not been paid or appealed to the court, every six months, we have to have a measurement date, as of when? Because it says, right now, it reads, as of, at the end of each month. So you want to change it to every six months, but every six months beginning when? June and December? I mean, you have to, there has to be some kind of, I think council would say the same thing, you've got to have some kind of measurement date, because right now...
Beginning in January of every year, every six months there. Beginning in January of every year, every six months thereafter.
Something, right, something along those lines.
All right, but I mean, you have a term in there of the end of every month.
Right, but the end of every month means that's when you do it. You said it has a, every six months, but starting when, beginning when?
From the beginning of the fiscal year.
Okay. Every six months. Every six months, starting at the beginning of the fiscal year? Gary, every six months, starting at the beginning of the fiscal year?
Yes.
Counsel, does that work?
Yes. I mean, it wouldn't be my suggestion, but yes.
I meant legally.
Yes.
Okay, let's do this. Let's, you've made a substitute motion. Is there a second for that substitute motion? I did hear a second. Let's have discussion, you guys want to grab a seat and you can stay in the place in line. Let's have a discussion on that substitute motion. We'll vote on the substitute motion, then we'll get back to the discussion. So discussion on the substitute motion to change at the end of each month to every six months, starting at the beginning of the fiscal year. Discussion. I see a hand. Yeah, go ahead.
Julie Nardone, currently it reads 12 months, and we're getting rid of that.
No, you're on the wrong article.
You're looking in a different article. Julie, this is article, the first one.
Okay.
Did you know Kevin Langmire? So my understanding is if you pass the benchmark of a month and something happens in that six months, the town will not be paid. Is that an understanding?
That's entirely possible.
Correct. Just wanted to make that noted.
Mr. DeSoni.
Okay, I just ran around in a circle here. What trail am I going to talk on here? Which one article?
We're right now talking about the substitute motion. What? Okay, substitute motion has been withdrawn. So let's go back to discussion, the main article.
Okay, now that I recircled, you go first.
Retake. Okay, this is not a citizen-friendly, warm and fuzzy town kind of feel. In the past six months, we have just voted in 7.2 million of new projects, not including interest, and a stormwater fee, and it's going to be a lot higher than people think because the estimate is low. And I just think you're setting people up for the town going after them now for fees, for your water fee.
No, it just doesn't apply to that.
Folks...
Okay.
So Julie, just to be...
I think previously it was liens. I was at a meeting.
Okay, whether you were at a meeting before, it reads right now, this only applies to the three items listed in C...
Okay, charges, fines, penalties.
Which is it, counsel? C what?
See, fees. See, if I could, I think, Ms. Nardone, the next article can be used on anybody who owes any kind of money to the town. This article pursuant to the statute is limited to the three items listed under the applicability section, development agreements, contracts with the town, and tax agreements.
Okay, so I need to come back. Right.
Andrea Green, 66 Cross Street. What comes to mind when we're discussing this article for me is that the town now owns many parcels of land. It's likely that the town would enter into agreements with developers or other entities in managing those parcels of land. So to have this statute in place, to me, is a good thing for the town because it helps us to manage that process better and to have some recourse if we get involved with any developer or entity that over time needs to default for any reason on any of their obligations to the town. And this way, as Town Council has said, it protects our investment as a town and gives us a way to recoup part at least of what they might owe us.
Thank you. Mr. DeSoni.
Okay, thank you. Short and sweet, I hope. This article is to make a framework of payment and not have payment overdue. So it's a payment to the town when and when it's due. Is that basically what it is?
Yes.
Short and sweet?
Sir.
James Morrissey, Voyagers Lane. We've discussed the quantity of potential liens. I believe you addressed that we're really just a handful, Town Counsel. We've also discussed perhaps changing the timetable for all of this. But question I have is, what is the average dollar value? And not to mention the high and the low of these potential liens that we're talking about.
Well, the one that we dealt with this summer was almost a million dollars. And you're looking at these tax agreements, which over the life of the tax agreement, the one you voted tonight was 1.5 million dollars. So they vary. I mean, it could be $100,000, it could be $800,000. But the ones of recent experience are almost a million dollars.
Mr. Crowe, last comment.
I was just going to say...
Coming down, okay.
On the planning board, we had dealt with one this summer that was on around $800,000 or $900,000. And we didn't have the option of putting a lien on the property, so what we had to do is invoke another state law where we can refuse to grant permits on the property, which wasn't necessarily the best action for the town to take in that case. And then this would give the town a different approach that we could have taken last summer that would have secured the town's interest in a way that's better for the town.
Thank you. And last comment.
Maria Repas, 208 Oregon Road. I understand what the applicability is, as it reads now. Is there a possibility that this could be expanded for other fees or penalties or taxes? And if so, would that be something that would have to come back to town meeting?
Yes, it's a bylaw, so it would have to be amended through town meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, we'll proceed to a vote. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion made and executed in the floor of Article 15, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article 16, amend the town of Ashland bylaws, collection of municipal charges sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. See if the town will amend Section 178-1A of the town of Ashland general bylaws as is printed in the warrant, or pass any voter taking the action relative thereto. Finance Committee recommends the town vote to amend the town of Ashland general bylaw as printed in Article 16. Ms. Greaves?
So this is a, this is a small change. If you look at the article in your warrant, the part that is crossed out is being removed. So it currently, betterment or other municipal charges, and it says currently for not less than a 12-month period, that is being removed. So it's a small change, but it's a timing thing.
Thank you, Ms. Greaves. To allow discussion, I'll enter in a motion for the town amend the town of Ashland general bylaws printed in Article 16 of the warrant. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Rush.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. What learning experience have we encountered that gave rise to this change?
Ms. Mead.
So the town has a bylaw, which is this bylaw, which is the mirror image of a state statute. The state statute was amended under the Municipal Modernization Act to remove the 12-month period language. And so we're doing this to have this mirror of that. And so just to address everyone's questions, this section of the bylaw does the following. If you owe the town money and you need a permit from the town, the treasurer has a right, has to tell all the various boards and commissions that you owe the town money and you can't get a permit until you pay the town or you make, or you enter into an agreement to pay the town the money. But in order to do that, there's a very long process, which is the process to which Preston, Mr. Crowe was referring earlier, that there is a notice process and a hearing process that all comes into play. So it's not something that's automatic. The treasurer automatically notifies the permit granting authorities, but there's a whole hearing process that has to happen before the permits can either be not issued or withdrawn. But the language change mirrors the state statute, it makes the bylaw consistent with the state statute that was adopted under the Municipal Modernization Act two years ago.
I see. So seeing as how the treasurer may not know what permit or license an entity is trying to get, they're circulating this to all of the departments that have that.
That's correct.
I see, thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Nardone.
All right. Since we're amending this, it sounds like we don't have to do it. Is that correct?
Ms. Mead.
You don't have to do it, but you would lose the advantage of what the Municipal Modernization Act did. So what the Municipal Modernization Act did was they looked and they said, if somebody owes the town money for more, it used to be for more than 12 months. If you owe the town money for more than 12 months, then the treasurer would tell the permit granting authorities that the money was owed and you would have to pay it. Under the Municipal Modernization Act, the state determined, the state legislature determined that, wait a minute, the town should be paid, they shouldn't have to wait 12 months to be paid before somebody wants some advantage from the town. And so they took that 12-month period out. So if you owe the town money for a month or for two months, the treasurer notifies the permitting authorities. If the permit granting authorities decide to act on that, they have to give you notice and they have to hold a hearing to do it before they can actually determine not to issue you a permit. Not to make you pay, not to take anything from you, but before they issue you a permit.
Okay. It seems extreme. I would say some other period, six months, three months. I mean, this is like one day. This seems innocent. This is the kind of thing where two years from now, when it happens to you, you're like, how did this happen? You voted for it. So I don't know. I don't know. I can't vote for this. It just doesn't feel citizen-friendly.
Mr. Herbert.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think one of the things I just want to point out is, we have heard, again, I've been here for five and a half years, we have heard for that time and longer that we need to do better to hold developers' feet to the fire. This is one of these tools that we can utilize to do that. I can tell you, everybody's sitting here at this table, and I know there's going to be people saying that we're not always going to be here, but nobody in this table wants to utilize this in a punitive way towards the average homeowner. We're simply doing this as a way, again, to hold developers' feet to the fire.
And Mr. Herbert, could you just clarify that a homeowner doesn't seek a permit unless it's a building permit, right?
Correct.
So there would be no applicability to the average homeowner unless they wanted a building permit or something?
Correct. Yeah, and if the average homeowner wanted a development agreement, that person's not an average homeowner.
Sir.
James Morrissey, Voyager Lane. Actually, to follow up on that, I just want to, this sounds like I might be getting too deep in the weeds here, but just so we're clear as to what licenses and permits we're talking about, if I don't pay, you know, a fine for, you know, excess water use watering my lawn, am I going to have a problem getting, you know, this permit or that permit? Or if I don't pay my, you know, if I don't pay that particular fine, are you going to deny me a dog license? Well, exactly what licenses and permits are we talking about here? I don't have the benefit of having Section 178...
It's a fair question.
...in front of me, so it's...
Mr. Herbert?
How broadly can this ensnare people is my question.
Ms. Mead, sorry.
It's broad. There's no, and you've had it broad in the town of Ashland, as has the state statutes. It's any local taxes, fees, assessments, betterments, or other municipal charges. And it is for any issuance of any licenses or permits, including renewals, fees, or transfers. And so I guess my point is, is that in the town of Ashland, this is not something currently regularly employed, even though it exists right now and for the 12-month period. The times that it comes into play is when somebody really owes the town a lot of money but is seeking to get something permitted for which they're going to get money.
But just so we're clear, though, I mean, this could be, I'm not saying it would happen, please don't misunderstand me, but it could be abused because it says certain licenses or permits, it doesn't say all licenses or permits. You just said it applies to all licenses or permits.
The issues of licenses or permits, including the renewals and transfers, a list of any person, so it's all, it's a broad statute, it's purposefully broad. But I, quite frankly, you know, I've been doing this almost 25 years, I don't think anybody's ever been denied a dog license because they owe...
No, I'm using those as just those, well, I'm taking it to the absurd to prove a point, to make a point, is that you could be, you know, denied the simplest of permits, because this doesn't talk just about development permits.
No.
Or, you know, for developers like Mr. Fafford or some other, you know, general contractor or what have you, it's, you could apply to the individual homeowner as well.
It could.
And simple data...
And it does today.
And simple, I understand that, but I mean, the point is, well, it's just a question of opening our eyes to the current status quo as well as the ramifications of the change.
So the problem that we ran into this summer was there was a, there was an argument, given the state statute says immediately now, it doesn't say you have to wait 12 months, and the bylaw was not brought up to date with the state statute. So we had a conflict that we had to make an argument that the town, because the question was whether 12 months had passed based upon the town bylaw, and this person owed the town a significant amount of money and was trying to do something that was going to make them a significant amount of money but not pay the town.
So, but there's no language in here establishing what constitutes a significant or substantial amount of money?
No, the statute doesn't, neither does your bylaw currently.
Interesting. Thank you.
Ms. Ingram.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to make a substitute motion, and it basically refers to the same type of thing as the last article, and that's instead of simply removing the 12-month, that we drop it to six months. Is this a, is this an option for us per the statutes?
So legally, can we do it?
Yes.
Yes, can we do it?
Yes.
My reasoning is that, again, everything that I argued before the previous Warren article of cash flow problems, and especially now that it's come to light that this can be held against the standard homeowner, the typical person, not just a builder, developer, you know, businessperson, that we give them at least six months in order to correct any problems that have occurred and to negotiate any remedies with the town before we, you know, start to deny them other rights.
Okay, let's...
If there's pushback, I won't submit it, but I really think that, you know, by going to this, you know, basically, day one, I mean, we're cutting, you know, we could cut a lot of people, we could. I mean, I'm not saying it's going to happen.
Why don't we see if there's pushback first before we go through the process? Fair? And I believe the Finance Committee, is the Finance Committee or is it? Let me clear.
It's just me as one of the...
Okay, so go ahead.
Just wanted to point out that they can't issue a lien or do something to you right away. There's still the requirement that you go to a hearing, at which point you have the opportunity to make your case, and they can still issue you the permit under those circumstances if you make a compelling argument that says you have cash flow problems or other types of issues. That's still available to you as part of the process.
So you're talking about the good faith petition to the appellate tax board?
No. The statute, if I could, Mr. Moderator, the statute requires the following process. The notice comes out to the permit granting agency, the permit granting agency, let's call it the building commissioner in this instance, says, oh, you owe the town, you know, $5,000, so I'm going to hold a hearing. You're giving notice of two weeks or whatever it is for a hearing. You go to the hearing and you explain to the treasurer and the building commissioner at that time, I can't make the payments and here's why I can't make the payments, maybe we can enter in a payment plan and you'll get your permit in that way. But that hearing has to take place before any action can happen.
But shouldn't that be statutory?
It is statutory.
But I mean, it's not in this article that this happens...
This is only part of the, this is only, we're only amending this section, and that is statutory. The hearing process is a statutory process.
I'll defer to everyone's better judgment, but just in case, I would suggest that you, in line A, under 178-1, that you remove the word annually if you're striking out the 12-month provision on it, because this basically says that the collector only has to tell everybody every 12 months.
Good point. So, hang on, Jean, what would we like to do? I'm looking at you, counsel.
Have you withdrawn the six-month?
I haven't submitted it. I wanted feedback before I did.
Well, I'm just the town council, so it's the Board of Selectmen that needs to decide this question.
No, but my question, Lisa's...
The annually stricken is fine.
That's what, that was what I was asking. So we can chalk that up to a Scribner's error.
Yes.
Scribner's error, okay. I'm not going to submit the article... I'm not going to submit the article, but I mean, it is something that should be considered, you know, in, in writing these, these types of things.
Jean.
Jean Crouch, 111 Green Street. My question is, as a member of the Conservation Commission, we issue permits that are basically state law. We also are under an obligation to issue an order after we close the hearing within 21 days. I'm not sure under, under state law that we could actually abide by this bylaw.
Mr. Crouch, in fact, you can, and that's exactly what the Planning Board had to do this summer. So you get notice before the hearing opens, you notice it at the same time.
Yep.
And you decide, A, not to open the hearing, B, to deny the permit, or C, to continue the hearing until such time as you work something out.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And, Mr. Kendall.
Paul Kendall, 25 Olive. So are we striking the annual?
Yeah, annually, it looks like it was a Scribner's error. When, when the 12-month was taken out, that should have been taken out at the same time.
Oh, it should have been?
It should have been. It's just a mistake.
In the first line.
Okay, so as long as, as long as the statute doesn't have that as well?
Yeah, it's just a mistake.
Okay.
Town staff works very hard on this and sometimes mistakes do seep through. I did, I heard something from the back, I didn't. Okay. See, no further discussion. This will require a simple majority vote. All those in favor of the motion on the floor for Article 16, please raise your cards. Thank you. And opposed. And that passes. Article 17, accept statute and amend the, amend the chapter 178 of the town of Ashland bylaws fingerprinting sponsored by the Board of Selectment. See, the town will vote to accept general law chapter six, section 172B and a half, and amend the town of Ashland general bylaws by adding a new section 172, 178-2, fingerprint-based background checks for applicants requesting licenses from the town for certain specified occupations as is printed in the warrant.
Broke it.
Everybody, okay? The finance committee defers to town meeting. Ms. Ball. Get all friendly down there.
Exactly. Oh, hello. Thank you. This is actually another article. This is another article that's going to bring us in compliance with state law. State law, chapter 270, section 25, requires any permit application for three occupations, which happen to be ice cream truck vending, second-hand dealers, or door-to-door salespeople to file an application with the Ashland Police Department. Those applications require fingerprinting. And so in order to obtain the mechanism, the proper mechanism to actually carry that state law out, we need to accept general, general law, chapter six, section 172B, one and a half, and then also include a new bylaw which is listed in your warrant. It's a relatively dense bylaw, but really it's just laying out the permitting and application process, which ultimately requires an application to be submitted to the police department within 10 days. They need to, they need to provide their fingerprints, and then this, by accepting the state law, the, the Ashland Police Department can then submit the fingerprints and obtain data from the proper state and federal databases. That information, once received as part of the background, is then shared with both the applicant and then the permitting authority. And that's basically the bylaw.
Thank you. To allow discussion, I'll enter in a motion. The town accept general law, chapter six, section 172B and a half, and amend the town of Ashland general bylaws by adding a new section 178-2, fingerprint-based background checks as printed in Article 17 of the warrant, except the fee set forth in section 178-2-6, fees shall be $60. Do I have to motion? Discussion, wow, a lot of discussion. Go ahead.
Cliff Wilson, 378 Elliott Street. I had no intentions of speaking tonight, however. I, I, it just begs the question, and, and I mean, it's crazy and it sounds terrible and everything, but should an applicant, door-to-door, selling ice cream might be tough, but perhaps someone who doesn't have fingerprints? What does one do in those cases? They had their fingers blown off, I mean, I don't know how it happened, but.
Let's go with Ms. Mead for that one, because.
I don't, Mr. Wilson, that's a, that's a good question. State law doesn't, chapter 270, section 25, doesn't, doesn't take that into accommodation. It merely says a requirement that all applications for ice cream truck vending or applications for renewal thereof shall include an applicant's fingerprint. So, I mean, I think there would probably be ADA, you know, relief for that in that instance.
Probably do the super glue thing. Okay. Mr. Ingram.
Gary Ingram.
I don't know how to follow that.
I don't either. Considering that the motion is printed in the warrants, differs from the warrant article as submitted by, I'm assuming the Board of Selectment.
The, the motion in, does not differ from what's in the, in the handbook?
Yes. You're raising the rate from $30, which is what's in the article, to $60.
Yes.
That's, that is printed in the warrant that way, in the article.
It's printed in the motion, but it's not printed in the warrant article. The warrant article itself, the original submitted from the Board of Selectment, says $30.
That's correct.
Should not the $60 be treated as a substitute motion?
No, because the motion on articles is not required to conform exactly to the articles printed in the warrant.
It's not.
It's not.
All right. I have a substitute motion that I'd like to make.
But I, I'm not going to take any substitute motions till we go through discussion on the article. You can make it, remind me if I forget, but I don't want to deal with substitute motion. We have six people online, let's see what they have to say first.
Hi, I'm Chuck Lids, 150 Oregon Road. My concern is really a little pedantic, but given the current federal administration's approach to undocumented people, the, I would really love it if it said that the records would be sent to the licensing authority within the town and only to that authority.
Can you tell me where you're referring to?
So in 178-23E, in the end of the first sentence.
You know, it says the applicable licensing authority within the town.
It says the applicable licensing authority within the town.
The town. And all I was hoping is that we could say, and only to that, because we don't have any restriction in this about who it goes to.
But it says the applicable licensing authority within the town.
Town, right.
It would be, I hear what you're saying, but it would be redundant. It says, it says to the applicable licensing authority within the town.
But it doesn't restrict it being past anybody else.
Well, it's coming from the federal government.
It's coming, well, yes, it's coming from the federal government, but one section of the federal government doesn't necessarily know what the other section.
So, so this process is outlined by, I don't know if the chief is still here or not, but outlined by the State Department of Public Safety and the federal government. And that's the language that's in here.
And.
They control how.
And we could, we cannot amend that.
I, I'm going to agree with counsel, rule that motion out of order, I believe it's redundant. Ms. Radel.
Janitor Radel, 26 Dirich Road. I actually had a clarification as well. We were looking at the fees where it said it's $30, but in the motion it said $60. Is that $60 per applicant? And again, if this is a, a business that's in town, is that an annual cost? Is that a one-time upfront cost when the fingerprints are collected?
So 178-26 is the time of each filing, each application. Each applicant shall pay a fee of $30, which would be $60.
So here, so let me, can I just, so the fee issue is that the cost to do this through the state is $30, so the town has to also administer it. So that's why that, when we, the article was done, and then it was discovered that the fee to the state is $30 in addition to the town, whatever processing the town has. So that's why it went to 60. And this is an annual, it is an annual license.
Does the fingerprint have to be done annually?
That is my substitute motion.
Yes, it says, it's, yes, the state statute says, or renewal thereof.
Okay, so the answer to the question is, it is an annual fee, it is each applicant. So it's $60 per person is applying for this, and that is an annual fee.
Even if the fingerprints aren't taken annually?
It, it says or renewal thereof, and it's an annual, it's an annual license.
So in a case for our business, which is, we have four employees currently, right now, that would be $240 per year in addition to what are health permits and other permits that are required by the town. That's a bit excessive.
So here's, here's the thing. If the town is going to issue ice cream vendor truck permits, peddling and soliciting or second-hand dealers, they are required to do this. If they don't want to issue those licenses, we don't have to have the bylaw, and they don't have to do it. But if they're going to issue the licenses, they have to do it.
Thank you.
Sir.
Hey, Ed Rose, 21 Olive. I have a simple question here. It says second-hand dealers. Did that include used car sales? That's second-hand.
Does second-hand dealers include used cars? I'm going to guess no, but let's get legal counsel.
No, that's a different, that's a different license.
I understand, but it says second.
Do we have any second-hand dealers? Well, we can't issue a license, so we can't have any.
Yeah, they're two different licenses.
To engage in the following.
That's a class-two license, not a second-hand dealer collector, which is different.
Ms. Stulman.
There seemed to be an inconsistency in two of the sections, so I'm wondering if this was, again, language that was given to us that we have to use. If you look at section 178-2-3B, the last sentence says, "The state and FBI criminal history will not be disseminated to unauthorized entities." Okay? Then if you go to 178-2-5, the last sentence says, "The town shall not disseminate criminal record information received from the FBI." It doesn't mention the state, and it says to unauthorized persons or entities, and the other section just says entities, not persons. So I'm thinking both places should say state and FBI, and both places should say unauthorized entities or persons. And if you were, when you're ready, I have a substitute motion.
Well, let's see if, what counsel's thoughts on that, because the way I look at it, I don't think it matters.
If I, could you repeat the first section? What section was it?
178-2-3B, the last sentence. It doesn't men, it says unauthorized entities, it doesn't say persons. And then the other thing that I noted says unauthorized persons or entities, but it doesn't mention state records, it just says FBI.
I'm fine with that, I don't have a problem with that.
You're fine with what?
The, the proposed amendment.
Okay, so what is the proposed, how about you, just have a seat, let's deal with the discussion and we'll come back to that. Don't let me forget either one of the two of you. Mr. Rush.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. There's been a lot of discussion about licensing ice cream vendors, but the 178-2-2A has two other items on it, and certainly number one seems kind of confusing. Does the state have a more concise description of what second-hand dealers and collectors are? Because I got a stamp collection, I don't know if I needed my fingerprints for that.
Ms. Mead.
I don't think so, Mr. (inaudible). Don't touch the stamps, though, without your gloves on. No, those are defined terms under the statute. There's a specific license for second-hand dealers and collectors, and I don't have that citation in front of me, but it's certainly not what you are, I don't believe. And certainly the peddling and soliciting is also a specific defined term.
All right, so second-hand dealers doesn't include yard sales or?
No.
Posting it on some eBay type?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Rooney.
And it doesn't include, like, antique dealers or art galleries? It would include certain antique dealers, but not art galleries. I, I don't have.
We're Googling the state statute. And given reception here is a little spotty, why don't we move on to the next question and come back to Ms. Rooney's question?
My question is on 178-2-2A and two, the peddling and soliciting door-to-door sales, does this apply to our minors? Because we do have booster organizations and athletic teams that go door-to-door.
No, it's, it's folks who ask for licenses to do this.
Correct.
Ms. Salit.
Judith Salit, 29 Meeting House Path. I'm back to the confusion with the 30-60, because when you go into the, and I don't mean to beat a dead horse here, but the language really is, there seems to be some problem with the language. So it said each applicant shall pay a fee, this is 178-26, fees, a fee of $30. A portion of the fee specified in the mass general law should be deposited to the Firearms Fingerprint Identity Verification Trust Fund, and the remainder of the fee to be retained by the town for the costs associated with the administration of the fingerprinting, which sounds like that's in the 30.
And what Ms. Mead said is, one of those costs is $30 to the state.
Okay. Now, second, and again, it's this fingerprinting every year, is that what I'm understanding? Because once it's in the system, it's not clear unless somebody does have one of those issues that, you know, where something happens to their fingers. It would be there, and why would there be an annual fingerprinting, an annual permit? Yes.
Let me see what.
Because this is pertinent to this argument, because when we went through this process and we were the ones that discovered this.
Ken, you want to step up to the mic, please, so we can hear you?
So when we went through this process, because, and we were the ones that.
Let me just be clear, Mr. Radel is the, with his family, the owner of an ice cream truck vendor in town.
Yeah, so there you go.
A good one, too.
Yeah, I'm a little.
And, and we sort of got through the process with the police department going through this process, checking with the FBI and the requirements for the fingerprinting rules and all that kind of stuff. The fingerprints are done once. As far as we could ever tell, there was never any need to renew the fingerprinting process, therefore never any need to reestablish this fee every year. So that's my point. We went through this. Our understanding at the time, going through it with the police and the FBI, is that this was a one-time event. You didn't re-fingerprint every year. Your fingerprints, the exception of having an accident of some sort, are not going to change. They're the ones that are maintained by the FBI, provided to all agencies if necessary from the FBI to verify your identity. There's no reason that it has to be done on an annual basis. So I know that was the answer, but I'm asking you to maybe amend that, if that's what you think it is, to at least look at it at a town level, say, that doesn't make any sense.
Ms. Mead, what are your thoughts on that?
I'm reading the statute, which says a requirement that all applications for an ice cream truck vending permit or applications for renewal thereof shall include an applicant's fingerprints and a current photo of the applicant.
When you say, I'm sorry, may I clarify? What do you mean applications for renewal thereof? Because I think this is separate than the permitting process, which I get as an annual basis. The fingerprinting process was never intended to be an annual thing. Why would that make sense at all?
Well, I'm not going to justify why the state law makes sense.
No, no, I'm just, I'm asking, it's a logical question here.
I'm, I'm just, I'm reading from the state law, and it says, "Applications for and renewals thereof."
And I'm asking for enough definition of renewals thereof.
When you reapply.
But I'm not reapplying.
But you, are you going to renew your license every year?
I'm not sure I understand what a license means in this case. We get permitted in any city, in each town.
That's your, that's your license.
Okay, but that didn't sound like that was what that was referring to, so I'm curious about this. And I don't want to tie up everybody.
Mr. Herbert, do you want to take a shot? I'm, I'm blowing in the wind here, so.
Okay. So my understanding is that the license itself has to be renewed on an annual basis. The fingerprinting, the permit, the license. So the fingerprinting piece only has to be done once. So after you, you know, submit your fingerprints, that is run against a national database. They will still have that to be able to run if they need to. To the extent that I believe the permit or the fee, I don't want to say the permit, but the fee applies only to the, to the process of fingerprinting. but the fee applies only to the process of fingerprinting, I think you would only have to pay that once.
I agree with the permitting has an annual renewal, and would pay that fee separately. I get that. I'm talking about the fingerprinting piece, which is the $60. If it only has to happen once, it should only have... I'm sorry, I interrupted somebody who was up here, but...
No problem.
Are we further along, or where are we? Because I'm lost.
Mr. Moderator, to that point, my substitute motion was specifically to deal with that. My only problem with that substitute motion would be the legal requirements based on the state statutes, whether or not we have the ability and to modify that to meet our own needs.
No. The state statute regarding the ice cream...
Those three categories.
...that I read from is specific to the ice cream...
You should think...
...to define second-hand dealer.
Oh, yes.
If I could. So, dealers in or keepers of shops for the purchase, sale, or barter of junk, old metals, or second-hand articles.
Okay, so that you have to have a shop to do it?
Right.
Or a consignment shop.
Okay. So, I'm going to say, Gary, that we're not going to accept the substitute motion that would deal with the substance of changing the state language, because counsel is saying it's, we can't do it.
James Morrissey, Voyager Lane. Implicit in your response, town council, to a prior question, you may have already answered this, but the person asked you about minors going around collecting for various social, you know, purposes. I believe that there's an exemption, if I recall correctly, there's an exemption for all residents, I believe, in the town bylaws, where there is no license required to go door-to-door, is that correct?
For the local, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
I believe, my question would be, is, does this eliminate that exemption? If my recollection is correct, there is an exemption.
Yeah, no, it does not eliminate the exemption. This is a different bylaw, and it would have to be read consistently.
Okay, second question. Suitability, the word suitability or unsuitable appears at least three times at 178-22A, 178-23E, and, I need glasses, real glasses, 178-24B. Is there any sort of draft memorandum being prepared by the selectmen in conjunction with the town manager, in conjunction with the chief of police, with regard to what constitutes unsuitable or suitable in the absence of a clearly disqualifying offense like sexual assault? Thank you.
Ms. Mead.
Not at this time.
What, I didn't hear?
At this time, no, we are not preparing.
So, suitability is just left undefined.
But the bylaw, the bylaw allows for the Board of Selectmen to adopt regulations for the implementation of the bylaw.
Okay, because, I mean, for example, there's mention of, for a crime that bears upon their suitability for a license or any felony or misdemeanor, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, you could be, the question is, how would, how would the licensing authorities evaluate, say, a DUI in 1967 or a fistfight in 1977?
Right.
I mean, we're talking about very old, moldy, stale offenses, not current or pending, you know, pending court proceedings.
So, the Board of Selectmen would adopt regulations to further define those types of things.
Okay, I, okay, thank you.
Can you guys give me just a second? Sorry, Mr. Ardell. The Board of Selectmen has decided to withdraw this article.
You're right.
The duck doesn't work, thank God.
Sorry, getting back to my script here. Where the heck was I? Article 18, subdivision land acceptance and road acceptance sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. To see if the town will vote to accept the road known as Tideman Road, to see if the town will vote to accept the road known as Royal Colony Circle, and to see if the town will vote to accept the open space parcels shown on a definitive cluster subdivision plan, Hillcrest Estates, and further that the board be authorized to enter into any and all documents and agreements necessary to effectuate same or take any action relative thereto. The Finance Committee defers recommendations to town meeting. Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This may, in fact, be our last exciting article. Town meeting is assigned...
You're implying that any of these articles have been exciting.
So, town meeting is assigned the exciting task of accepting roads, and so, Article 18 is the acceptance of specifically Tideman Road and Royal Colony Circle. And as a frame of reference, Tideman is located off of Ridgewood Road, and Royal Colony Circle is located off of Old Connecticut Path. The article also requests town meeting to accept open space parcels that are located in the Hillcrest Estate subdivision. The board asks that town meeting support Article 18. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. To allow discussion, entertain a motion, the town votes to accept the roads and property as presented in Article 18 of the warrant. Do I have such a motion?
Some move.
Aye.
Mr. Rush.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The acceptance of the open space for Hillcrest Estates, is that removing land from the tax rolls that we would otherwise get income on?
Mr. Herbert.
Mr. ...
You weren't prepared for that, sorry.
I...
Ms. Mead.
You might recall, in the Springtown meeting, the town accepted the roads and Hillcrest Estates, but as part of the approved subdivision, there were open space parcels that were supposed to be turned over to the town, but they had some encroachments on it, so they, the developer took care of those encroachments, and now we're accepting the open spaces part of that subdivision.
So, we're just completing a plan that...
That's correct.
We had accepted before, okay.
Right.
Mr. Commissar.
Jan Commissar, Pondville Lane. Do the roads that we are proposing to accept, do they have sidewalks?
Ms. Mead, some...
Mr. Crowe would...
Mr. Crowe.
Yes, these roads, I believe, have sidewalks on one side. They meet all the standards of the Planning Board as of the time when the subdivisions were permitted.
Seeing nothing further, this will require a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion Article 18, please raise your pink cards. Thank you. And opposed. That passes unanimously. Article 19, amended by law, Wildwood Mixed Use District sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. As required, the Planning Board held a hearing on this article, and the Planning Board intentionally did not, intentionally did not close its hearing on this article. As a result, it cannot be acted upon this evening, so we will not be addressing it. There being no further business, I'll entertain a motion to dissolve.
Some move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yay! I said 118?
No, well, you said...
I was close, yes.